We're live.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Middlesex County Council Tuesday, April 26, 2022 at 1:00 P. M. Now call this meeting to order. And as far as Wardens remark remarks, I'm going to pass today because I think we're in for a long meeting, so I want to make sure that we get started. And we've got lots of things to hear and talk about. So at this time, I would like anyone to disclose any pecuniary interest or general nature thereof. And if you want to speak up, do so because I can't always see everybody's hands go up at once, but I I don't see anything and I don't hear anything. So I'm going to move on to business arising from the minutes. And the minutes of April 5, 2022, the meeting of county council. I'm looking for a motion that they be approved as presented and that we adopt the recommendations of the committee of the whole set of those minutes. So that looks like it's moved by councillor Richard, seconded by councillor Mayhew. Anyone against? Seeing none, we're going to move on to deputations. Any deputations? Seeing none, now moving on to inquiries or notice of motion, and I believe councillor Smith, you have a notice of motion. And this is your opportunity to talk about it.
Okay, thank you, Warden. So the motion that I have brought forward today that I gave notice to at the last meeting was that the county engineer prepared draft crosswalk art policy or guidelines, not sure which one Chris would like to see for council's consideration and approval at the May 10, 2022, meeting of council that supports the strategic focus of cultivating community vitality to advance and diverse, healthy, engaging communities across Middlesex County. And then if I have a second or for that, then I'll speak to that.
Okay, and it looks like councillor Burkhardt is seconding that, so we have a mover and a seconder, so let's open the floor for discussion.
Hey, thank you, Warden. I'll just keep this very brief. I'm sure a lot of people have done some research and read my email that I sent last week. So the the thought process behind bringing this motion forward is that there's a lot of municipalities and community groups within the county that are looking for the ability for crosswalk artwork in our downtown cores. And those are from events or different community groups and some of those that I have outlined in the in an email would be for example, in southwest Middlesex and Clanco specifically. They have their their annual tartan days and their their roots in in Matt and they could have a crosswalk painted in those colors or in Elsie Craig with their gala days or as I like to call it turtle days in an array of green colors. Or in any of our municipalities, the rainbow crosswalks for pride or red for Canada Day or an orange color for truth and reconciliation. And as I mentioned, a lot of our downtown cores are along county roads. And this is, this is the first step into allowing our municipalities and community groups and events to be able to do this type of thing. I know that most recently in municipality Stratford-Caradoc, so Joanne Vander or councillor Vanderheiden or councillor Richards can speak to this as well. They've just gone through this process in regards to a rainbow crosswalk in their downtown core and their their law anatomy where their downtown is not along a county road. So it's it's great that they're able to to make that decision there. But in the majority of our municipalities, you know, Elderton, Clanco, Dorchester, Park Hill, all those downtowns are along county roads, and and this is the first step into allowing our municipalities and in groups to be able to do this type of thing. So I'll leave it at that and I'll I'll let anybody else speak to the motion.
Hey, thank you. I see councillor Vanderheiden, your hand up.
Thank you. I'm in support of this. I have no issue at all with this. I just would like when when we get to report to find out, you know, who's going to bear the costs, like if municipality is going to want to do something on their stretch, then there should be some costs that's that's not carried by everyone but by that community. And councillor Smith, you're absolutely right. Stratford-Caradoc just approved our first crosswalk for gave pride and it's going to be on one of our side streets because that's the streets that we own. We also are looking to do one in Mount Bridges and possibly Melbourne, but those are county roads so that that might solve that issue of trying to figure out how to get that accomplished. So thank you for being one step ahead on that one because we were we were heading down that path anyway, so that 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 makes total sense. So thank you.
Any other comments? Councillor Burkhardt, Justin?
Thank you. And through the warden, I'm just going to echo what councillor Vanderheiden said. I'm definitely in support of the motion that councillor Smith put on the floor. In Luke and Bedolph, we have had a rainbow inclusive welcoming crosswalk for a number of years now. And it was greeted with considerable pride by our community. And I think it does speak to bringing community together, no matter what the reason is that you're what type of crosswalk here. You're thinking of putting in whether it is one that is of an indigenous theme or that speaks to an event in your community. I think it does speak to community beautification. And I would agree with councillor Vanderheiden. I do think that if a municipality wants to make those improvements to their crosswalk, then they should be the ones to pay for it because there is an expense to that.
All right, any other comments? Councillor Smith?
If I could, Warden, if there is no further comments, the the one thing I did fail to mention that I did email out was the thought process on that is that with the the costing, it would be 100% refundable to the county if the county is the initiative of of installing that painting. But having it refunded by the the local municipality or or group or however we go about that. It's this is just the the thought would be is that the county engineer would put forward a policy to allow for these this artwork to happen. But 100% funded by the local municipality or community group or what however we go about that. I I don't want to see the the actual dollar amount falling on the county budget at all.
Okay. Any other comments?
Adam Warden, I have one more question if I could.
Yep.
Joanne, to to all of this, I again, I'm totally in agreement, but I know we have a flag policy as well here, Stratford-Caradoc, and in that policy, we have regard to anything that's politically divisive. Just because one group wants to have something doesn't mean it's appropriate for the community. So just to be wary of and and cognizant of the fact that some some things are divisive. And you know, one group may be in an agreement, one group not. And if it's something very, very political that way, I just put a cautionary suggestion into the policy for that.
Well, yeah, it's difficult because a lot of things that we're talking about are already divisive. So I mean, I just don't know how you you would that have that in a policy, but I guess that that's the individual municipalities' decision to make. I'm just not sure the role of the county through that. So I, again, we have a mover and we have a seconder. I'm just going to ask it. Chris, did you want to talk about this at all or?
Well, thank you, Madame Warden. And and I did get the and I appreciate councillor Smith giving me a heads up that this was coming a few meetings ago, and I have been thinking about it quite a bit, but I think councillor Vanderheiden hit it on the head. There are divisive issues out there and I'm right now the the main crux of of what I am trying to develop in a policy is how what the county role would be in regards or county council's role to be in regards to deciding what would be appropriate on the county road. And some of the challenges that may occur, understanding that these roads run through communities in local municipalities. They are still county roads. They are would still be subject to scrutiny from county residents as a whole. So just trying to sort of wrap my brain around getting some examples actually here in Buffalo, talking to some of my counterparts in the United States who have been doing this for a while and also talking to some of the other county engineers from Ontario. So just getting those things in order. Certainly doable. There will be some challenges that I anticipate with the with the implementation of the report. But again, it's from from my experience, I have gotten quite a few requests for painted crosswalks. And there is a large swath of issues that I have been requested to include on county roads. And it's not limited to crosswalks. I've had requests to name infrastructure bridges, for example. I get regular requests to name bridges. And it's challenging. I've always tried to take a bit of a neutral stance. I feel a county should be neutral ground for these types of issues. But again, it's the 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 motion is here. I am working on on a policy for consideration to council at the May 10 meeting.
Okay, so going back to this motion, the May 10 meeting, is that a suitable time or does that have to be adjusted?
I certainly would appreciate a little more time if if that's okay with councillor Smith to 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 do the second meeting in May. That would give me a little bit more time to put this policy together. Again, I'm I'm away from the office this weekend in Buffalo at the county engineers meeting in the United States, but again, if it's there's an urgent nature to this, I certainly can get something to the next meeting. Although another couple of weeks would certainly be helpful.
So is that something that Mercy, you're okay with changing the date on that motion then?
I'm fine with that, but we would need a motion to amend.
Okay, so motion to amend. That councillor Smith nodding, yep, and seconded by councillor Mayhew. Anyone against that amendment? Okay, seeing none, then we're going to vote on the actual motion. Anyone against the motion as presented today with the amendment? Seeing none, so that's moved. Moving on to net reports and new business. Eight A is the electronic patient care record solution contract, and that would be our Middlesex London chief, Neil Roberts.
Thank you, Madame Warden, and through you to members of council. Good afternoon. And so the report that's before you today is a follow up from our previous reports to county council on August the 16th of 2021. Middlesex Land and Paramedic Service issued a request for proposal seeking a software solution for electronic patient care charts. And then on 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 September the 28th, 2021, Middlesex County Council authorized and directed my office to negotiate a contract and present it back to the council. The reason for the delay in this obviously was COVID being one, but also during the negotiation of this agreement. The company that was awarded was actually taken over by another company. And so we have been working with County Legal on negotiating this agreement and ensuring that the original award was met and the intent and direction of county council was also met throughout the process. As a result, County Legal has completed the contract review and is endorsing the contract to be executed. There are no additional financial implications to this contract as it did go to county council earlier. It was just more on the the finalizing of the contract itself. The recommendation that is currently before county council is that Middlesex County direct the chief of Middlesex Land and Paramedic Service to execute the contract between Middlesex Land and Paramedic Service and Interdev Technologies. Madam Warden, I'm happy to take any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Uh oh, we don't hear you, Alison.
My microphone, hear me?
There you go, yep.
Okay, so the speakers are going in the garbage and then I will continue on. So we've had Chief Roberts report. And any questions or comments about that council? Seeing nobody or hearing nobody, can I get a mover? And that would be councillor Rock, seconded by councillor Elliot. Anyone against? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to now move on to, thank you, Neil. Moving on to eight B, the dedicated pediatric neonatal transport unit, and that is Adam Bennett, deputy chief. Welcome.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to council. I'm happy to provide an update on our dedicated pediatric neonatal transport unit. If everyone would recall in it came online in June of 2019 in which Middlesex Land and Paramedic Service and Middlesex County received direct funding from the province of Ontario to fund this specialty unit in conjunction with the Children's Hospital of Western Ontario. It's comprised of a specialty team of nurses and respiratory therapists and paramedics. In May of 2020, Middlesex Land and Paramedic Service presented a business case to the Ministry of Health to increase the funding that provided 24 hours a day, seven days a week funding for this particular unit. Between the time periods of March 1st, 2021 and March 31st, 22, this particular transport unit has responded to 854 calls. So this is 854 calls to some of the more or some of the most fragile patients that we have within our community. So this is a tremendously encouraging number to see that this unit is dedicated to performing these on average 2.3 calls per day. Due to the nature of the transport unit, it is often called upon to travel great distances, and we can see that each call took an average of two hours and 29 minutes to complete. Over the course of the year, the dedicated unit traveled a total of 98,000 kilometers while specifically engaged on calls with the specialty team. Throughout the year, the dedicated unit was called to respond twice into the 911 system. Now, the unit, the dedicated unit is engaged solely for the purposes of pediatric neonatal transport. We have a process in place that should the unit be close by or should the unit be moving past a critical emergency that due to the nature of the seamless system that they would be called upon to potentially respond, but it's immediately backed up by a unit within the 911 system. And we saw based on the pattern that we have, this happened twice, but there was never any time where the dedicated unit was not being fully staffed, nor was it any time where it was not actively engaged within to the the dedicated system in which it's there. Our reporting back to the Ministry of Health shows our our utilization for that unit is 100%. Over the course of the same time period, there were 23 instances in which calls with the specialty team were actually stacked or simultaneously dispatched, which prompts Middlesex Land and Paramedic Service to provide additional support to the transport, the dedicated transport unit from the 911 system. When we take a brief look at the statistics for that one year period, we see as well that two callers within that 98,000 kilometers that were driven, the total hours that we saw engaged in in actual driving time amounted to 1,519. So since its inception, this initiative has been extremely successful and has provided tremendous service to some of our most valuable or vulnerable citizens within the county and within southwestern Ontario. There are no financial implications. This is 100% funded from the province of Ontario. And the recommendation is that this report regarding the dedicated pediatric neonatal transport unit be received for information.
Okay, thank you. And and I think I speak for everyone. I found those numbers staggering. I had no idea. Did for that, but what a great service and must be a great comfort and relief to the people who whose babies are being transported. So it's fantastic project. Councillor, councillor, any comments about this? Yes, councillor Brennan?
Yeah, through you, Madame Warden, Adam. Thanks very much for this report, Adam. It's great to see the amount that it's being used. My only cautionary note would be how it's like, these are high stress calls a lot of the time with children and it really affects the people looking after them that are on that ambulance. How staff holding up? Are we seeing any turnover of staff? Because I can imagine it's very stressful for them pretty much every time they go out on this unit.
Thank you for that question, councillor. We do have a very engaged peer support team that engages with all of our staff, including the members on this dedicated unit. What we have found is that the members of the dedicated unit are active, they're they're extremely engaged within the unit and they're very proud to be a part of it. And we've seen very positive results from those paramedics and they've been able to liaise and work with their hospital counterparts and they've formed a very cohesive team and we see that there's tremendous support and collaboration between the two.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you through the warden to Mr. Bennett. Thank you for that report. I also, I, you know, 2.3 calls per day. I I wasn't expecting that for some reason. I don't I don't know why. I just I know there's lots of kids out there and I know that makes sense, but it just wasn't something that I was really focused on. And because this is obviously a very successful and needed program, what do we need to do to make sure that the province understands how how well the how well we're serving the public with this so that they continue to fund it? Because obviously it's funded by them. And I don't want to lose that funding in order to, so I guess, how do we report back and? And are there any any indications that, you know, if it reaches a certain level of of care that we might need to put another one on, like just, you know, how that all works?
So thank you very much for that question. We do report to the Ministry of Health specifically about this unit twice annually. And within those reports, we are providing them with the same statistics that you've seen today. So they see our utilization rates. They see our mileage that we have. They see the number of engagements that we have, the number of times that we have calls that overlap or potentially are stacked on top of each other. We make sure that we that we review those numbers quite frequently and that we also keep the ministry updated with that. And the ministry itself is quite engaged within this initiative as well because it's a support not just for our community, but for southwestern Ontario. And I believe the Ministry of Health because of the success that this unit has had and and the others, that they're quite proud of it as well. So we do make sure that that is something that we are engaged with, so.
Okay, that's something that we almost need to let other people know about, not just the Ministry of Health, because I think our residents would be greatly comforted to hear about the service that we're able to provide. Now I see two hands up. I have Chief Roberts, your hand is up.
I'll I'll defer to the end. It's just a bit of a closing comment for council as well, so.
Okay, and then I'll move on to councillor Burkhardt, Justin.
And thank you through the warden. Thanks for that report, Adam. It certainly was eye opening. I'm just, if you could just expand because the numbers do seem, you know, staggering. But I think it's important maybe just to remember that this isn't just a service for London Middlesex that you serve the broader community as well. And maybe just how far in southwestern Ontario do you travel? And is it just for bringing patients to LHSC? Or is it also for transporting to other neonatal centers if if there's a mom in London that, you know, is actually going back to her home community of, let's say, Hamilton or something like that?
Through so through you, Warden. Thank you very much. That that is a a great question and a fantastic reminder for everybody to the unit does service all of southwestern Ontario and it does get called in from Windsor. It has traveled up to Owen Sound, it'll hit Mount Forest, it'll pick up the neonatal patients from the tertiary hospitals and bring them to more definitive care at the larger reception centers. So it doesn't necessarily mean that they're bringing patients into LHSC. They could potentially be going into Toronto, they could be going into Windsor. They could be going into Hamilton. The because it's a provincially funded asset, there could potentially be the time where it might get called in to go and do a call and pick a child up in Hamilton and bring them to Toronto. Those types of instances are extremely rare. And when they happen, we backfill within our system here for that, but it does travel a great distance and it has a tremendous network with the other units that are there because there are only a few staggered across the province.
Okay. Councillor DeVet, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Warden. Thank you for that report, Mr. Bennett. As others have commented, that volume of work that's being accomplished is really is staggering. Again, I was one of the ones that wasn't expecting that kind of response. I understand the geography, though, and that that also helps clarify. What I was wondering, you you've tracked a lot of detail in terms of how people are used and what assets are employed and miles and and calls and so forth. Does the ministry actually or do you know, does the ministry or some part of each hospital actually track outcomes too? It's I guess there were opportunities to provide service to residents before, but because it's specialized, are they finding better outcomes for children? Are they finding because of lack of because of good treatment on the en route to somewhere that the length of stay can be reduced or do you know, are they looking at that kind of thing or are or are these kinds of sort of, I don't, they're not soft numbers, but they're maybe not numbers that are tracked by you. Are they being collected? Do we know that there's there's a better chance for kids to survive or to get better or to have I don't know, speedier outcomes?
Yeah, I'm not able to speak directly to the to the actual numbers that the LHSC would track, but I do know that they are that they do look and they do monitor the types of patients that they they transport and their potential outcomes because they have such a highly specialized team, there's potential protocol changes, equipment changes that come along with that from those potential outcomes. And what they have been able to do by creating such a team is that they're able to go and transport children that are in infants and pediatrics that are so critically ill that they normally or they wouldn't have been able to be transported under other circumstances. So if we went back a decade, these are children that would have been treated in a tertiary facility and wouldn't have had access to the care that they have now. So being being able to be brought to Children's Hospital or sick kids in Toronto or brought to Hamilton is a huge tremendous outcome for that child and it puts all of those patients in in an absolute best case scenario. So I do know that they do look into it extremely closely and see what the outcomes are. And I do know that they they do take a vested interest in making sure that if there are changes that need to be done to their internal parameters to the treatment that they may give pre and post transport, that those are also taken into account before and after and during their transport. So I I do know that the team itself is highly invested in in exactly what you've asked for about whether or not the outcome for the for our patients. It it's greatly improved by the presence of this system.
Well, just as an add on, based on what I heard on the CBC this morning as I was coming into London, this is a true example of a team. This is not a collection of individuals who are working together. This is a team and and it it makes sense that everything that's being done is adding to good outcomes for babies and families. So keep up this awesome work. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If not, we have a motion to receive this report. Councillor Vanderheiden, seconded by councillor DeVet and assume everyone's for that and I don't see any hands saying they're against it. And but I do have two screens going, so speak up if you don't, if I don't hear anything. But so Carrie, moving on now and everybody needs to look at their agenda carefully. We are going to hopefully defer the HC, HC1 and HC2 to the end of the meeting that includes the all the bylaws as well. And then what we'll do is we'll move that particular part to the towards the end. I have a place where it's going to go and it'll go right second. Right back to after the announcements. Okay, so can I ask council to move that and second it, please? Councillor DeVet, seconded by I don't know. Okay, councillor Justin Burkhardt, Justin, and anyone against that? Hearing or seeing none. And again, pardon me because I can only see one screen. So now we're going to move on to councillors' comments and other business. Is that going to be a bylaw? We need that one? Okay. All right, so that that we move that to the end. Okay, sorry. Is there any, is there any councillor comments to be brought forward? And again, hearing or seeing none. Then we're going to move to committee of the whole. Moving to committee at 1:32 P. M., looking for a mover. Councillor Mayhew, seconded by councillor Richards. And anyone against them? Harry, none, so moved. So the first thing that we're going to do is going to delegations and reports of county officers. Our first delegation is 11A1 Western Ontario Warden's Caucus regarding the workforce strategy. And that's a presentation from Kate Burns Gallagher, executive director of the Western Ontario Warden's Conference. And I'm not sure Kate's on our screen yet or not.
She is, Warden.
Okay, good. I'll move screens. And she's ready to go and welcome Kate.
Thank you, Madame Warden. Good afternoon and through you to county council. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for the opportunity to present the Western Ontario Workforce Strategy to you this afternoon. It's a culmination of a great work from the fifteen member counties in the western Ontario region over the past eighteen months or so. Um, so I, I can, I'll just say next slide and hopefully that'll work for us. Great. So for those of you who may not be familiar with, uh, the W O W C, we are the fifteen upper and single tier municipalities in western Ontario, going from Simcoe County all the way down to Essex County, which includes middlesex. We have over three hundred communities. Um, it, when we look at the SWIFT geography, we have over three million residents. But looking at our fifteen upper and single tier municipalities, we have one point five million residents, half a million square kilometers, ninety percent of that rural. Next slide. So, and about a year into the pandemic, I would say March of, um, twenty twenty-one, I think it was, um, we realized that workforce was a, a, a problem that was enhancing as the pandemic was continuing. Um, workforce was an issue in twenty nineteen and early twenty twenty. And as pandemic was carrying on, workforce issues were becoming more and more of an issue. Um, we realized that there's the growth within the twenty-five to fifty-five, that critically, um, age sector was insufficient to meet the job demands in our region. We really needed to actively attract workers to the region as a whole. And we needed evidence to back up the work that we were going to start doing. Next slide. So we, uh, with funding from the Ministry of Labour Training Skills Development through the Ontario Market Labour Partnership, we pulled together an amazing team of Aileen Murray, who was the project lead, David Campbell was our data, uh, data nerd, we like to call him. Lisa Prime was our planning consultant and Tracy John pulled it all together and made it look beautiful with our marketing communications pieces. Next slide. So for the project process, there were three distinct phases. First was the background study where we looked at everything that has happened in the past. Um, best practices both within the province, within the country and internationally. And developed a background report on that information. And phase two, we were able to engage over five hundred stakeholders across the fifteen counties, um, all of it virtually. Um, to find out what was happening in the region when it came to workforce and housing. Because part, the biggest part of this strategy is we realized workforce and housing are so tightly, um, integrated. You can't have one without the other. You need people to work, but you also need places to house those people. So, um, in phase two, it was all about the consultation, um, looking at attainable housing piece, pulling together our marketing and communications and what that would look like and having a final findings and issues report. So that all important data. And in the last phase, um, we pulled together all of the important strategies that, um, we'll be showing you at the end. Next slide. And one of the things, um, that we were able to pull together, uh, was data specific to each of our fifteen member counties. So for middlesex county, um, this is excluding London when we look at the population. Middlesex county's population has been on an increase in the past five years, seven percent over the past five years and seven percent over ten. So fantastic when you see great population growth when we're talking about workforce demand. Uh, similarly, city of London has been seeing population growth, but looking at a little bit higher than eleven percent over five years and fifteen percent over ten. And also to, um, middlesex's benefit is the median age is approximately forty, which is well below the average. So that means you're attracting younger people to the region. Next slide. And here's a breakdown of the population growth by municipality in, as well as including the First Nation communities surrounding and within middlesex. So you can see, um, and now I hope I say this correctly, Luke and Bitolf had the fastest growing, um, population from, uh, twenty fifteen to twenty twenty. And, um, from the, and that, all of your communities had, um, increases in population for the exception of Newbury. Next slide. Uh, so what does this all mean? Um, middlesex also has natural population growth. So your births are in, uh, outpacing your deaths, which is great news. Um, so you have more people being born than passing away. Um, interprovincial migration, you also have people coming into the area from the rest of the province, which is incredibly beneficial. And, um, on average, there's close to three thousand immigrants settling in the county, um, which is fantastic news. Uh, a lot of our other communities don't have nearly as many, um, immigrants coming into their, their regions. And as well, you have nearly four thousand non-permanent residents coming into middlesex. Next slide. And what is the workforce like? So, um, nearly five thousand Londoners commute to other municipalities within middlesex. So those are Londoners coming into middlesex. And fourteen thousand people in middlesex are going into London each day for work. So you've got a lot of cross commuting between the county and the city, as I, I'm sure I didn't have to tell you that, but we know the numbers now. Next slide. Uh, so all this means that middlesex is in a really good demographic situation as it's been improving over the years. You're attracting population from other places in, in Ontario and that population is growing. But what does that mean for future workforce needs? Next slide. So middlesex county saw strong growth in total employment. So you had thirty-four hundred jobs added between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty. Total employment is expected to increase by another ten percent or three thousand jobs from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-eight. In addition, over the next decade, sixty-five hundred more people are going to be needed for replacement demand and three thousand for growth demand. So you're looking at ninety-five more, ninety-five hundred more people by twenty-twenty-eight for that replacement and growth demand. So that's sixty percent more new workers needed compared to the last decade. So it's a significant number of people that you're going to need working in middlesex county. Next slide. And what sectors are, do you need? And which are the ones that are growing the fastest? Construction, healthcare, manufacturing, personal services, transportation and warehousing. Next slide. So that was all of the information about middlesex on its own. Now we will go back to looking at the region as a whole, what our strategy told us. Next slide. So the, the end result of all of the work over the course of the twelve to eighteen months of the project, I mentioned that background discussion report, which was all the great, um, best practices. We had the findings and issues report, which was all of the work with this, uh, the five hundred stakeholders as well as that data. And that data is also included in the appendix. And then we have our occupations and housing affordability. The Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade said, look, nobody's told us how much you can make as a welder and what that can, you can afford as a home in a specific region. So we did the hard work and we found out which, what sectors are paying and what that pay can afford you or buy you in a home. So occupations and housing affordability is that work there for you. And last but not least, the strategy itself. So what are we going to do as the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus? Uh, our member counties and all of our stakeholders to address, um, the increasing issues with workforce and housing. Next slide. So the vision and mission of the strategy are there for you. I won't reiterate them because they were also in your agenda package. Next slide. But at the end of the day, the workforce strategy has four goals and objectives, fourteen strategic directions and sixty-six actions. Now, all of these are not for the, uh, the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus to do on our own, but should really engage all of our stakeholders and our member counties. Next slide. The strategic pillars, so those four goals, workforce retention and attraction, leveraging our existing population, attainable housing and employer recruitment and retention. None of these can happen without the other. So they really are, um, pillars instead of silos. They're working together on a continuum of that workforce and housing continuum. Next slide. And the project resources. So there's a lot of great resources that are now available for our member counties, for the municipalities in the region to access. Next slide. First, we have our strategy publication document. This is a summary of all of the work that was done over the eighteen months. Um, and a lot of the images, oh, sorry, all of the images are from people within the western Ontario region. And a lot of them are from middlesex. So thank you to Cara and Ben and their team for supplying the images. Um, you may recognize quite a few locations from middlesex in that document. And it's in PDF format for download and, um, is also print ready. Next slide. We also have this incredible micro site, workforcestrategy.wowc.ca where all the information from the workforce strategy is located, um, and is easily accessible in little bite-sized chunks along the way. Next slide. So you can see here, we have, um, at the data center where each member county's information is, um, we have, uh, you can access all of the different resources and all the different documents in little bite-sized chunks. So if you want to see just about the housing, you can pull up just the housing piece. If you want to see just the, um, immigrant attraction, you can pull up just the immigrant attraction piece. So you don't have to read the whole document. So it's a great resource, um, that we, we have here with the micro site. Next slide. Uh, once again, that community data I mentioned, uh, and that we walked through today. Next slide. Best practices and case studies. So if you're looking to see what others have done, um, you can pull those best practices as well in the four, um, uh, pillars. Next slide. And there's also a newcomer writing a self-assessment. So you can see how your community is shaping up to welcome newcomers into your community or region. It's a self-assessment. So you just download it and you click yes or no. And you can see where your community needs to work on, um, being more welcoming. There's seventeen categories ranging from strategy, leadership, health, education, community amenities. There's sixty-eight questions in total, and it gives you a really good idea of, um, where to partner as well. Uh, and this was developed uh, in partnership with our southwestern Ontario local immigration partnerships. Next slide. So how can the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus as a regional organization contribute to workforce development? Well, we made sure this was a regional plan, uh, and looking at providing support for a member municipalities, really engaging workforce development stakeholders across the region. There's already a lot of great work happening. Whether it's our workforce planning boards, whether it's SCORE, whether it's, um, the local immigration partnerships, there's a lot of great work happening in the region. So it's leveraging that work that's already happening. And I like to say, put it all in one basket so that we know what's happening. It's about connecting with the provincial and federal governments as well and advocating on behalf of the region. Um, we also had identified the roles for the caucus to play. And as you can see there, there's many different roles that we play, um, throughout the action stages of the strategy. Next. So next steps, there's a stark numbers. We, we look at the large numbers, there are nine-five-hundred people needed for middlesex county. But when we look at the region as a whole, we need two hundred and fourteen thousand people for western Ontario by twenty-thirty. And we'll need a hundred and seventy-three thousand new housing units by twenty-forty-one. So our strategy has measurable outcomes, but most importantly is about collaboration. It's bringing all of the partners together. The federal government, the provincial government, all of the members that are in the field in workforce and housing and industry stakeholders. We need to make sure industry and business are at the table for all of these discussions and engaging all of the stakeholders. And then last but not least, also attraction, making sure we're attracting those people to our region. Um, so I, I'm pleased to say that we, the implementation work has already begun. Uh, at three o'clock today, we'll be meeting with the fifteen member county economic development offices to talk about what projects are already well underway and how they align with the strategy. Um, and there's great, great work already being done with middlesex and Cara and her team. Um, and we really look forward to working with all of you. And as a final note, the wardens at the beginning of the month, um, has set their twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three priorities for advocacy. And they narrowed it down to four key priorities, which were affordable housing, workforce, broadband and mental health and addictions. So they all really stem from this workforce strategy. And this workforce strategy helps inform all of the key priorities that the work, uh, the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus will be looking forward to moving forward for the next year. So I thank you for your time. And as well, thank you to Warren Morwick, who is an incredible ambassador for middlesex county, who sits on our, the economic development committee, who is in charge of moving this implementation forward. You have an amazing advocate around the table through Warren Morwick. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Kate, for those kind words. And, and, uh, I do want to say to recognize that you did present that report at EDCO and, uh, did a great job and it was very well received by the professionals in your field. So we know that, uh, when you have this type of report, it's going to help with that post-pandemic recovery and gives everybody a bit of a guideline to go through to get to that point. So well done. And I'm really looking forward to the four, um, the priorities that we've put forward for this year too, because I think they're very much in alignment with what we've done, the continuation, but some extra things too, like the mental health piece is going to be exciting to see. So again, thank you. I see councillor Vanderheiden has her hand up, so let's go ahead, Joanne, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madame Warden. Thank you very much, um, Kate, for that report. I find it fascinating to read and I, I really like how you set it up where you can get bits and pieces in different forms. And I think that's, uh, for, uh, this day and age. I think that's fantastic. Um, absolutely, workforce, we're all seeing that around the board, uh, how important that is. And I was also happy to see that you had over five hundred stakeholders, um, uh, that, that was, that's a great number. Um, there's a couple of things in there that are confusing to me, so I'll just tell you what's confusing. And then I'll ask my, my other one question. Um, of course, that you said this is eighteen months in the coming, so, um, it's not new census material. It's, it's the old census material. Is there any way that you could, uh, change the census material in the documentation that's on the website as opposed to the written documentation? Because I think that would make a little clearer, um, understanding of what, what is actually going on right now, because it's been, it's been, uh, quite unique in the, in the last number of years. So that's just a, just a comment. Um, also, the, the part about immigrants and it says that they're an average of close to three thousand immigrants settling in the county each year, but most live in London. So that's not living in the county, that's living in London. And you did in brackets, say immigrants account for ten percent of the population outside of London. Um, so I wonder if it would be more clear, uh, we don't have a lot of immigrants in the county. I know over the years, we've had people come in and they, they do. They, they get settled in and then they move to where they have services. And that, that's just the way it is. We, we can't, uh, change that at this particular point. But whether you then move that from, um, instead of talking about immigrants, talk about migration. Because I think each of our communities is really understanding that migration of people in the province and, uh, is different right now, especially the last number of years where people have been moving out of big cities and moving into the county, um, or even just buying homes in the county, which changes the whole scope of the housing piece. So that's a piece that I, I, I found confusing in the, in the report. And think maybe if you would have talked about migration as opposed to, and maybe just a little line on immigration, that, that just would have clarified that. And then if I could, my last question and point is about attainable housing. Now we all understand how important that is. And I'm really glad to see that's one of your pillars of, uh, um, program through the, through the next year. Um, the problem is there's different needs around the table in our communities. And for me to convince one community that it's an important thing to really focus on when they're not focused on that at all. And I can even say that in the county, there's different focuses on attainable or affordable housing and what each of our communities is doing to move that forward. So, um, it's, it's one of those ones that's very important, but it's a different need in different areas. So how do we, how do we focus that and bring it together so that we, we highlight the concern and still get the services in place or the funding in place or the connections in place? Whichever, to, to move that forward as a whole and, and as partners, because it's hard to partner in something that you don't see a need in.
Wow, some really good comments. Joanne spoken like the would-be leader of the FCM party there. Um, now I do want to say, um, I'm just gonna maybe help Kate out a little bit. The attainable housing piece, uh, is defined this year by five different primary areas. And that will be model policies, developer interaction, a resource center, rental programs, overall program promotion and marketing. And, um, WELC will develop a policy framework that member municipalities can use and adapt to expand the opportunities and access to attainable housing. So all of those will be a jumping off point for the individual, um, regions or municipalities or counties to be able to use to, to mold to their own thing. And Kate, if you have any additional comments, please do so.
Thank you. We're more through you to councillor Vanderheiden. Um, in regards to the census information, we use MC's projection data. So, um, when we first received those first demographic, uh, or sorry, the population information, uh, I did go back and compare and we were right on the money, uh, with the, the analyst projections. Now we're going to wait till the end of the year with all seven themes being released by census and then, uh, December, January, we're going to go back and update it all. So we will have that updated census data, most definitely, but we want to wait till all the themes are released. Um, thank you for the comment on migration. That's a really great input. I really appreciate it. Um, and I'll look to, uh, talk to the local immigration partnerships about how we can really frame that better, um, and make it that sound, uh, make more sense. So I appreciate that. And yeah, and last but not least, uh, as Warren Morwick mentioned, um, when it comes to the housing piece, we're really looking at providing when it comes to the housing piece, we're really looking at providing templates and information and ways to engage our local municipalities when it comes to housing. And also, we have a forum on the Microsite of sharing best practices. So that's what we're going to be doing over the course of the next few weeks, is getting that information from all the municipalities and counties of what they're doing, and then getting it up onto that forum and simply, you know, that good old R and D, Robin duplicate.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Kate? And if I can't see you on the screen, speak up. Okay, I don't hear or see anything. So once again, Kate, great presentation. And at this time, I'd like to ask our group to move this presentation. So okay, for mover, that Councilor Brennan, seconded by Councilor DeVet. So we have that presentation received for information. Thank you again, Kate. Moving on now to 11A2, 2022 Benefits Renewal Overview. And it's a presentation from John Harkins, Partner of the Group Benefits Select Path. Welcome, John.
Hello, everybody, how are you? Now, I can ask you to flip it, or I can share it, whatever's easiest for you folks. It looks like it's already up, so I'm happy to let you guys do the changing of the slides. So thank you, everybody. We've got our annual review here, and it was nice to be following the last presentation because it's nice to see that the average age is low, which is great from an insurance perspective. It's nice to see that the area is growing, which is nice from an insurance perspective. And it's nice to see there's more homes that need to be built, because my daughter works for the Home Builders Association. So I'm three for three so far today. So anyways, this is just a quick snapshot, sort of a 38,000-foot view of where the benefit plan has gone. Overall, the plan ran really, really well. The one exception, it's been sort of an across-the-board thing that we've seen on a lot of programs out there, is the long-term disability. And I'll explain some of the pressures that we've had on that. So if we go to the first slide, you'll see on here, the overall increase to premiums was 9.1%. This is entirely due to what happened on the long-term disability plan. So I'll just break down the silos here. The dental program is fully funded, there's a surplus in the plan, and the actual rate went down 3%. I think that's important to note, because last year, the dentist decided that they needed a 4.6% increase in their fee guide. And we thought that was going to be over and done with. And this year, in February, they put through a 4.75% increase in their fee guide. So basically, a dental procedure that took place two years ago today is now going to be about 11% higher than it would have been then, just because of the increases that they put through. And we've got a breakdown of where the services came from a little bit later on on here. The other bucket that we look at is the life insurance and long-term disability. This is a pooled benefit. Obviously, a large life insurance claim or a number of disability claims would result in claims being paid out far in excess of what the premium levels are. There was no change in the life insurance premium, but we got a 47% increase on the long-term disability. And I'll go into some specifics on that in a couple of slides here. That's really the only portion of the entire program that caused any sort of alarm for us. The extended healthcare, which is primarily the drug component, we actually got a 3% decrease. So the life and disability are about 25% of the overall premium. The dental and the extended healthcare, which are sort of predicated on dollars in versus dollars claimed, ran really, really well. So there's no real major claims that we need to be aware of. There are some large claimants, but on a group of this size, that's totally to be expected. Go to the next slide. I wanted to give a history here on the long-term disability, because this is probably the most volatile benefit. I think I've mentioned in the past, we have a large block of hospitals. We have about 65 hospitals in Ontario that we manage. And there's a lot of pressures that are really driving long-term disability, and some of them really came to fruition here. But I just wanted to give you an illustration of where we've been rate-wise. You'll see there, we had La Capitale, we went to Cigna for what looked like some discounted rates. We weren't overly thrilled with the way Cigna adjudicated. We then went to Equitable, which guaranteed to match Cigna's rate. And they've steadily increased their price as well. So we got to a point this year where Equitable and even the big three, Manu, Sun and Great Westlife, which is now Canada, have all put very, very large rate increases through. And I'll get into the reasons why here in a minute. So we thought it was prudent to go out and check the market out and see what was out there. We were able to secure another quote that came in a little bit lower. And one of the benefits of this is we also got a two-year rate guarantee on it. So we've got a couple of years to kind of monitor it and see how things are. And keep in mind, when the new carrier comes on, they're starting with a clean slate. Any of the previous claims are the responsibility of those carriers. So we've got a bit of runway here, then that there won't be any claims for the first probably three or four months since the transfer. We've got a little bit lower rate. And when we went to market, there really wasn't a lot of takers out there. They looked at the experience and the history, and they said, well, you know, given the risk and the nature of it, we're really not in the business of coming in and trying to lowball to get the business. So the rate that we did get from Industrial Alliance, you know, is lower. But we liked the fact that it was guaranteed for a couple of years as well. Next slide. So what we're seeing out there is, there's a big push on LTD. You know, everyone's talking about mental health. We've seen increased incidence of this type of disability. Interest rates are very low. So I mean, the example that I would give you is that if you've got an employee who's receiving, let's say, $5,000 a month on LTD payments, that's $60,000 a year. Conceivably, they can collect that benefit for 20 years until age 65. So it's about a $1.2 million liability that has to be set aside. So obviously, with interest rates down around 1% or 2%, the amount of money that's needed to perpetuate and pay that out is substantially greater. So if interest rates start to creep up, it actually works in our favor in terms of setting up the reserves that are required to pay those claims. We've got an aging population, and there's just an increase in claims activity. Like I said, we marketed this plan, and we received one quote, but we did secure a two-year rate guarantee. The important thing to note here, on the entire group, about 35% to 40% of the entire makeup of the group are the employees at Strathmere Lodge. 90% of the claims have come from the lodge, and this has been a trend that we've seen for years. It's the nature of the beast. We see a lot of claims in the owner divisions. This type of environment where there's heavy lifting and a lot of stress, we've got an aging workforce. You've sort of got all of the factors working together, it sort of creates the perfect storm. So in the absence of seeing claims on the main county group, there's a disproportionate number of them attributable to the lodge. And this is, you know, nothing new, it just seemed to peak a little bit during COVID. So the one thing that we also point out is that normally with a disability claim, the majority of them are back to work within the first couple of years. So as they start to drop off, as long as there aren't new ones coming on, you know, it'll certainly help us down the road. We've got a new carrier, and now that things are starting to ramp back up, hopefully, we won't see the disabilities that we have in the past. So we're going to keep an eye on that, but we've got two years of breathing room before we even have to consider looking at any kind of adjustment on the long-term disability. Next slide. So this is the breakdown of the actual extended healthcare claims. You'll see there that about 65% of every dollar that's claimed goes to the drug component. The paramedical services, which we've broken out, are about 17%. This is actually good, we normally see the drug component about 70%. So if people are using the paramedical services a little bit more, we like that. There's also a cap on those benefits, so there's no real excessive use on those. Vision care is a cyclical benefit, it goes up and down based on eligibility. Services and supplies is sort of a catch-all, and obviously, hospital claims are down a little bit just because of the fact that a lot of elective surgeries and things have been postponed. So this is a pretty good breakdown, and this is pretty consistent with what we see in the market. Next slide. So there are the paramedical practitioners, we call them the big three, chiro, massage, and physio tend to be the largest claiming groups, and that's obvious here. You'll see there that, you know, a lot of these places were closed last year, that's why there's such a change. So they're sort of returning back to the normal levels. You know, you couldn't go to the chiropractor, you couldn't get a massage therapy appointment during the height of COVID and the lockdown. So this is basically some rebounding and some catch-up that we see. So once again, no cause for alarm on this. You know, we're seeing the psychology benefit was a little bit down from the previous year, but the fact that it's being used is certainly encouraging. It's one of those benefits that if it's not being used, we're a little bit surprised. So we like to think that every dollar that's spent on this sort of treatment has a trade-off or a return somewhere else and reduced absenteeism, maybe a reduction in medications, those types of things. So no cause for alarm here, everything is running sort of as expected. Next slide. These are some of the drugs, just to give you an idea of where these costs come from. So, you know, group insurance is sort of predicated on the old 80/20 principle. 20% of your people will probably incur about 80% of your claims. There's going to be a number of people that aren't going to have any claims. And, you know, you can look in the mirror and see if you've had claims or if your spouse or your children have had claims. But it's usually a few isolated incidents. You'll see here, these injectable biotech agents, which are new medications that aren't easily replicated, there's no generics available, there are some new biosimilars coming on. You'll see there that the average cost of one of these prescriptions for the treatment of rheumatoid arthritis is about $2,800. Dermatological category is usually for plaque psoriasis. Don't be too alarmed that there's antidepressants in here. Every one of these groups has antidepressants in there. It's a multi-line drug, it can be sleep aid, it can be ADHD medications. And you'll see there, there's a lot of prescriptions, but they're relatively inexpensive, coming in at around $30. MS agents, we see those creeping up. There's really no new types of disease states, they're just better and more effective ways of treating them now. But they do, you know, obviously come at a cost. So we've got a couple of these large claimants on here. And if we go to the next slide, this is the actual medications. You'll see there, Humira, which is a multi-line drug. These are injectable drugs used to treat primarily rheumatoid arthritis, plaque psoriasis, and Crohn's and colitis. And you'll see the MS drugs on there as well. So, you know, we're pretty confident that these are going to continue. But, you know, we're not seeing some of the other drugs that we've seen on some of the other plans that we manage. We've got a few groups that have cystic fibrosis medications, and they're about $350,000 a year per person. So, you know, it's to be expected on a group of this size, the law of large numbers, you're going to have a few people are going to be high claimants, and you're going to have a number of people that aren't high claimants. So that certainly works to our benefit. Next slide. This one, this is the dental, and you'll see there that the fee guide adjustment, as I mentioned, was 4.6% and it increased to 4.75%. Don't be alarmed by the increase in utilization, it's basically catch-up. If you looked at the utilization and we drill down by month, I'm thinking it was April, May of 2020, there was virtually no claims. That's right at the beginning of COVID, when people were scrambling for PPE and toilet paper and everything, and they were locked, they're going to the dentist. So the dentist more than made up for the fact they weren't able to provide services. They're saying now that when people come in, they need extra units of scaling, because they haven't been able to get down, and they're doing deep tissue scalings and extra units of those. They're doing extra x-rays, and they're doing so at a rate this year, 4.7% higher than previous. So we expect this catch-up is going to be behind us probably by the summertime. People should be back to what they call the dental maintenance level, and we should start to see this leveling off. But overall, the plan ran well, and that was what resulted in the decrease that we're able to get. So going forward, the health and dental programs are renewing at a discount, and the LTD is really the one that's sort of driving the overall bottom line increase. Next slide. So that's about an 85-page report consolidated into about 10 slides. And there's a lot more detail, if anybody wants it, we certainly can make it available. But overall, the plan has ran well. We do a lot of municipal work, we do a lot of public sector work. And aside from the LTD, this program ran really, really well over the last year. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, well, thank you for that report. And I always feel sorry for people that work for months on a report and get all kinds of information, then get 15 minutes at the end of the day to bring that forward. So well done getting that information forward. And I see Councilor Vanderheiden has her hand up, so I'm going to let her ask her question.
Perfect.
Thank you very much, and good to see you, Mr. Harkins. It's been a while. A couple of quick questions. One, it looks like a good report to me. I mean, and the explanations you gave, for the most part, make total sense, because of COVID with the dentists and people not going and then going and all of that sort of thing. And maybe even a couple of different types of drugs, because people are dealing with mental health. You know, that all makes sense to me. I'm still kind of looking at the long-term disability piece. I mean, that is a huge increase. And at first, I thought it was because the rates are set Canada-wide. And you kind of alluded to that, but yet, they also are specific to Middlesex County. And you gave that example with the lodge. And with the lodge, it kind of makes sense, because a lot of the people that work at the lodge have been with us for a long time. And they're not, you know, in the younger age group, so to speak. I'm trying to be very gracious here and being diplomatic. And yet, when I see COVID, well, to me, COVID has really nothing to do with long-term disability, other than you maybe work too many hours, one person, and got really hurt or had an accident or something. Low interest rates, you explained that. Well, aging population, well, by the time our population in our jobs, they either have to be hurt really bad at work. I guess, how do I say that? Or they're already out of the workforce by the time they get to the age piece, if you know what I mean. So I'm kind of still wondering why it had to go up 47.3%. I just find that a significant amount of money.
It's not really, it's, as I mentioned, it's partially based on the block of business that the underwriter has. And it's also, you know, your group is big enough that they give some credibility to the usage on the group. The main driver and the sole driver is the fact that I don't have the numbers, I can certainly get them, of what's actually being paid out. So let's say we had nine claimants that were all receiving, just for argument's sake, $50,000 a year. So that would be $450,000 in payments to those nine members that are off on claim. But the amount of money that would have to be set aside for those nine members that are receiving $450,000 would probably be in the neighborhood of, I'm thinking, $4 to $5 million. So that's the problem, is that it's not the actual payments, because actually, even the payments would be higher than what the premiums are. It's this reserve calculation and the fact that the money doesn't have the ability to generate and grow as quickly as it normally would in a higher interest rate environment, plus the overall general aging of the group. It's based more on demographics, occupations, risk, those types of things. One of the things that we'd actually talked about was if we set a rate specific to the lodge, they would have a rate that's far in excess of what the overall rate is. But we could have the county members come in with a rate that's substantially lower, because we're sort of mixing apples and oranges together. But if we kept them separate, it would still require the same amount of premium. But the dispersment of that premium would be more probably representative of the risk that it represents.
Okay, any follow-up to that? All right, any other questions? Seeing none, then I'm going to ask for a motion to receive this report for information. Councilor Mayhew, seconded by Councilor Cornelison. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, thank you again, John, for that presentation, it was excellent.
Thank you, as always, and I hope to see some of you in person soon.
Well, so do we all. Okay, thank you. 11A3 Audit Planning Report for the year, ended December 31st, 2021. Presentation from Ian Jeffries, our lead audit engagement partner for KPMG. So welcome, Ian.
Good afternoon, everybody, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Warden, and fantastic, perfect. I am going to walk through our audit plan for the fiscal 2021 year. Please interrupt as I go through, if you've got questions, if you'd rather save them till the end, that's fine as well. If we could go to the next page, please, one following that. Those are great-looking pictures, but they don't tell you much, so we'll keep going. All right, so the executive summary, a couple of things here, and we'll touch on these a little bit throughout the document. Audit quality is obviously important, it's very important to us, but it's important to us for our reputation, but more so your reputation. So you as council should be very interested in what we do to maintain quality. And there's a slide on the following page that will talk about materiality. I'll go to in detail on the following page, COVID-19. This was a big deal a couple of years ago, we've all learned to manage. And from an audit standpoint, notwithstanding some of the extra funding and the extra costs that have come by various payment streams and from various organizations, there's not a lot different from last year in terms of how we're going to do our audit over the course of the next month and a half or so. Our audit risks, which are at the top right of the page, remain very constant from last year to this. The business of the county hasn't changed drastically, so that's why those are pretty much in line one year to the next. No new accounting policies, and the fees that are on page 10 are in line with our proposal from a couple of years back. So we'll touch on those as well. We go to the next page, please. This is the quality slide, I will leave it here for your understanding. But there are numerous things that we do at KPMG to ensure that our audit quality is of the highest quality. Certainly, you know, two sets of eyes, and in a lot of cases, three, look at work papers. We speak with management, we engage with management, so that we have a full understanding of what's going on. And Hoda and I make sure that, you know, in an audit environment that's remote, that we're in touch with our team every day on the engagement, so that we are aware of what they're doing and very, you know, keenly aware of anything new and unusual that comes up along the way. So a little bit of information there on quality, if we go to the next page, please. Materiality, so materiality is the driver based on total revenues. And we take out, in this case, the non-recurring gain that came from the sale of In this case, the non-recurring gain that came from the sale of real estate. So we're looking at a financial statement materiality of two point one million. That's not the number that's really important, because you will all recall that. We don't come back with our audit findings report with numerous, you know, corrected adjustments, uncorrected adjustments. Cindy and Ewa and the team. Do a really good job of keeping the books and records, so we very infrequently find things that are audit differences that we have to bring forward. But in the event we do, it's the number at the bottom of that slide, a hundred and five thousand dollars. So that will be the level at which you see either corrected or uncorrected misstatements. Again, we don't have a history of either at the county, so that's certainly a good thing. But also to ease your fears. When I say that financial statement materiality is two point one million dollars, that does not mean. That I look at everything above that and ignore everything below that. Our audit is risk based, so even something that might be a hundred thousand dollars, a couple hundred thousand dollars, if there's a risk related to it. A significant estimate or things like that. We'll be looking at it. So that's not the threshold of. We look at things above and we ignore things below. If we go to the next slide, please. Okay, so there's a couple of significant risks that we're obligated to look at in every audit that we undertake. The first one is revenue material misstatement due to fraud from fraudulent revenue recognition. We rebut this at the county simply because we know where the revenue comes from. It's easily calculated. There's no bonuses or incentives for management to mismanage. Or have a bias in financial reporting. And there's no estimation uncertainty in terms of revenue. So we rebut the risk here as we've done for ages, and we do that at every municipality that we audit. Next page, please. So the risk of material misstatement. Due to fraud resulting from management override of controls, we have to address this. We have standard audit techniques that we use. We look at adjustments, we look at retrospective review of estimates to make sure that if management's making an estimate. They have the right information, they do a good job of it, that there's no bias in making the estimate. So things like that help us. Do what we need to do under the auditing rules to look at management override of controls. Next page, please. So going concern assessment. There's not really a going concern assessment when you talk about a county. We look at these things in the context of that, but certainly the fact that the county will exist one period to the next isn't at any risk. But when we look at receivables, deferred revenue, revenue accounts payable and expenses, those are. Big things at the county. There are there a lot of dollars or there is some estimation in some of them. In some cases, deferred revenue is a little bit gray in terms of when you've met. The standard to bring that revenue into income or when it has to remain on the balance sheet. There's estimates in accounts payable, it's sometimes for accruals that there's no invoice for, but you know, you've got an obligation. So we look at all of those things. For the most part because of their size, but there is a little bit of estimation in some of them as well. Next slide, please. Tangible capital assets and payroll are two others. Obviously, payroll is a fairly large expense of the county. So we look at the actual payroll, we look at employee future benefits, we look at things like that. Because there are estimates embedded in those. From a tangible capital asset standpoint, until last year, I would have said it was pretty straightforward and easy. That changed a little bit, but we'll be working on the tangible capital asset section. Simply because, again, it's large. Estimates there would be useful lives and that type of thing, but your assets are very typical assets. Cindy and the team have a good idea of how long they last, so that's not exactly. The, you know, the most risky estimate in that section. Next page, please. So from a milestones and deliverable standpoint, obviously, we're presenting the audit plan today. We've done some planning and had some discussions with Cindy and Ewa and the team to get an understanding of what went on over the course of the year to enable us. To prepare this report and to plan for our audit. So we're starting the second of May, which it's hard to believe is next week. But certainly, our goal at this point is to be back for your meeting the end of June to present the financial statements and our audit findings report. And then wrap the audit up fairly quickly after that. So. That should work with Cindy and Ewa there. Game to get this done by the end of June as well, which will be a nice thing and. Get a good start to the summer once we're done. Next slide, please. So these are. The audit fees one year over next. And, you know, part of me would like to say it's very unusual for the audit fee to come down, but that wouldn't be quite telling the whole story. There's like a couple of things that we don't have to do this year that we did last year. Obviously, the sale of property is behind us. And then that auditing standard that's second from the bottom. We incorporate that into our work. Now we're in the second year, so that's not so much an issue. But the other items that are there. Are things included in our proposal and we put those forward for your approval. Next slide, please. The appendices, I'll go to appendix one if we could, and I'll leave the other three for your reading pleasure. But. These are the required communications that we have as auditors with you as counsel. Our auditors report. In draft will come when we make our presentation of the audit findings report to council the end of June. The engagement letter is the one from three or four years ago that continues in effect one year to the next. They're good for five years. Our reports to council obviously are this meeting and our findings report the end of June. We will get a representation letter from management and that will be included in the audit findings report. I can say right now that we are independent of the county. I don't expect that to change. It's very difficult from a municipal perspective not to be independent unless you're doing. A lot of other work that is not audit work, and in this case, we are not. We will bring controlled deficiencies as we find them, and if they're significant for to council when we bring our audit findings report. And the one thing, you know, that I ask at this point. You know, of council and typically. I suggest that if you've got concerns, you reach out to me directly. Contact information is on the first or second slide. But to help us plan and coordinate, if anyone's aware, you know, to the best of your knowledge and in your role are the two caveats that we make this request with. Of any illegal acts, possibly legal acts, fraudulent behavior, anything of that nature. Please, you know, reach out, have a conversation with me. I'm happy to to engage in a conversation, but. It helps us plan and scope if there is anything. So. If you have concerns, please let me know. Otherwise, I'd be happy to chat with you, but no need to reach out. The next two appendices I'm going to leave for your reading pleasure. And with that, Madam Morden, I'll turn it back over to you and take any questions from council if there are any.
Oh, great. Well, that was a, again, we've got a lot of reports and they're all interesting today. And I always feel, as I said before, they always take a long time to amass and then all sudden they're there and gone again. But counsel, any questions or concerns that with what we've seen today, knowing that it's coming back again later on, a few months? No, if not, then I'm looking for a motion that the twenty twenty-two benefits renewal overview be received for information. And that would be Counselor Robb and then seconded by Counselor Richards. Anyone against? So moved and thanks again for that presentation, Ian.
Wonderful pleasure. Have the rest of a great day, everybody. Bye bye.
Bye bye. Now we're moving on to the economic development update presentation from Cara Finn, Director of Economic Development. Welcome.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to council, I'm delighted to be here today to just bring forward an update with respect to the department. And I'm joined today at council by Taylor Rummel and Ben Chance from our department, as well as Paul Newpickett is also on today, who was engaged in a great deal of our work. To date. So Chris, if you could move forward to the first slide. First update for you, as I know that council has been informed, we do have a new office for the department. It's located at the Wellness Centre in Camoka. Right at the top of the stairs, you could find us there. We have two small offices and the staff are rotating out of that office at the current time. For the public, and so you'll see us there. Next slide, please. Also, just want to inform council that we will be bringing back our summer intern. Some of you may have met her during last year. Gabrielle Gosling will be joining us again as she graduates this year. And returns to us to do some economic development and tourism marketing with us. And then with that as well, Paul, as you'll know, we'd like to congratulate him on shifting over to his new position as Corporate Communications Assistant. And so with that, we are currently hiring for a new economic development and tourism assistant position, and that is posted publicly at this time. Next slide, please, Chris. Taylor has done a great deal of work, obviously, and in supporting of our strategic. Planning overarching at the county with respect to strengthening the economy and then as well in support of our newest economic development strategic plan. In laying out marketing plans for both the Invest in Middlesex and Visit branches of our department. And so. With respect to Invest, we have three main focuses for our marketing plan. First is to strengthen existing. And to create new collaborative partnerships. We'll talk about that today. Also, to increase efforts to attract, retain and expand businesses and workforce. And then the third is to enhance efforts to promote exceptional quality of life. Next slide, please. With respect to workforce development, of course, you've heard quite a bit of that today at the regional level. And we certainly support the work of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus and have been engaged in that. But as you well know, we also have our own regional partnership within London and Middlesex. And the Middlesex Workforce Development Partnership has been in place for some time, and is a collection and collaboration of many. Our stakeholders in workforce and labor developments across our region. And so a couple of things. One is that our partnership with London and Area Works is going exceptionally well. Recent features that you may have seen on Bell Media, CTV News have included Pentacast and Greener Still. And we have some new ones coming up throughout the county as well. We also are engaged with London and Area Works online. If you want to check them out on the CTV website and as well with their job fairs that they host. We have one this week and then there is another one coming up in September. Also, together with our partnership, we engaged in the latest Employer One survey, and that wrapped up. At the end of January, we had sixty Middlesex businesses engaged in that. Very elaborate survey that is conducted once a year. And the reports for that can be downloaded at workforcedevelopment.ca if you're interested. And of course, we're using a lot of that information to guide the action plans for the partnership. I'm very happy to tell you that we have had a successful application for provincial funding that is to be announced, but that has begun and will support. The Middlesex Workforce Partnership in their efforts from April first of this year to March thirty first of next year. Total value of that work is around a hundred forty-five thousand dollars, including cash and in-kind contributions from the partnerships. Some of the interesting projects we're going to be working on this year. Downtown decor contest, a job fair, a youth entrepreneur business plan competition that we've run the last couple of years successfully. We're also engaging with the CFTC on some virtual business assistance software. We'll also be conducting employer and sector roundtables as well as some other work. We have a special workforce project that we're engaging in this year and with support of the workforce partnership members, local school boards. And London post-secondary institutions, we've begun to develop a work integrated and co-op project. That proposed project will include hiring a contract coordinator, developing an updated co-op function on the Work in Middlesex website. Creating a video series to promote will opportunities across Middlesex County. And ultimately building relationships with Middlesex employers and local and regional high schools and post-secondary institutions offering cooperative opportunities. We have support and funding being provided by both school boards towards the video series. And we're just awaiting word on project applications that we've made to both. Actually, all three, London Community Foundation, Fed of Ontario and OMAFRA. So we'll keep you updated about that. If I could have the next slide, please, Chris. CIP developments and implementation, of course, you know that we've been highly engaged in this over the course of the last few years. And want to commend our communities that have gotten involved at the local municipal level and developing. And so over the course since twenty twenty, there's been a developmental update of a total of six CIPs now, the most recent being finalized for Adelaide MedCap. The twenty twenty-one CIP implementation program included partnership with four local municipalities with active CIPs. That totaled thirty-three thousand five hundred and change for twelve different CIP projects leveraging over two hundred twenty thousand dollars in private investment. And the twenty twenty-two CIP implementation program is now open to partnering municipalities. The due date for those submissions is October thirty first. Next slide, please. Excited to talk to you about the Middlesex FDI program, our Funded Investment and Lead Generation program. We had a very successful campaign, very different, of course, due to the confines of COVID. But we had a successful application to Cana Export, providing funding to support lead generation for twenty twenty-one. We had over twenty-five direct connections made with companies interested in expanding in Middlesex County. For twenty twenty-two's campaign, we've submitted another successful application to Cana Export to support this year's activities. And funding will support hiring an FDI consultant to generate fifty leads this year. It also supports middlesex staff travel and middlesex staff FDI training. And RFQ for this consulting role has been distributed, proposals have been received, and a consultant has been chosen. Next slide, please. With respect to the Ontario Food Cluster, as many of you know, I continue to co-chair and act as treasurer for this organization, which includes thirteen other. Largely municipal members throughout Ontario, working together to generate leads with respect specifically to agrofood and agri-tech. Middlesex County was successful in securing a Cana Export grant for OFC's lead generation in twenty twenty-one. That resulted in forty virtual meetings being held with FDI leads. Throughout the campaign, and I'm excited to say we have been successful again. In securing funding for OFC's twenty twenty-two campaign. And that will again support lead generation. We're looking at soliciting one hundred leads this year. And that is underway. The group has selected three trade shows throughout the year, including private label manufacturing, CL and IFT mission. Next slide, please. We've also been working on updating material, of course, as the census information becomes available, we'll continue to update these, but a new community profile or investor's guide has been produced. County-specific demographic information, of course, has been updated, along with major employers on the invest site. Again, we'll continue to do that. Printed copies of these have been distributed to all of the lower tier municipalities, as well as many of our partners like the CFTC, who use that information in dealing with their clientele. Excellent. Along with that, we've also updated the success stories brochure. Thank you to Taylor for all of her work on this, and that includes success stories of. Industries throughout the county. Again, a link to that booklet is available on the Invest in Middlesex website and print copies are also made available. Next, please. As mentioned, as part of our workforce strategy, we do have a Young Entrepreneurs Business Plan Contest. We just launched this this week, and so this is open to residents right now. Be wonderful if you promote this throughout your community. Residents ages eight to eighteen, there's two different categories. One is elementary-based, eight to twelve years, and the other is more high school-based, thirteen to eighteen years. Participants must complete a fillable form or do a video briefing their business plan and submit that no later than. May twenty first, or pardon me, May twenty-third. And one winner from each of those groups will receive a Chromebook to help start and launch their business, as well as links and resources. Available throughout the community to assist them as they develop their business. Details are available on the Invest in Middlesex social media channels, if you wish to share that or again on our website as well. Next, please. We have a new project that we're working on together with Middlesex Federation of Agriculture and decided to tell you about as it takes shape over the course of the next few months. We developed educational science with respect to crops growing throughout Middlesex County. You will see these erected. On roadsides going forward this later on this year. And so these will indicate what crops are growing there, but also some of the end uses. So a nice educational project that we're working in partnership with them and something that the community has been mentioning over the course of the last year as well. Next slide, please. Uh just talking about Invest campaigns, again, supporting uh the marketing uh efforts with respect to Invest. Uh if you're looking uh to see where we we may be represented over twenty twenty-two. Uh we've got a number of different outlets, uh everything from local television to international magazines. Uh business facilities, Expansion Journal, everything from my FM through CTV. And uh Billboard's Site Selection Magazine as well. So just watch for us on some of those platforms, of course, over the over the course of the year. Next please. I'm just talking about some of our recent local collaborative efforts. I know most of you are aware. Um but uh some may not with respect to different communities, things that we've been working on. And we are so very grateful for the relationship that we have together with all of the uh the municipalities locally. And being able to work together with their staff at uh the administrative as well as economic development level uh where they exist. And so uh some of the things, obviously, you know, at um the county level, we've been working very heavily uh on Middlesex County Connects. And working with uh Taylor Mooney and Cindy on those efforts. Uh assisting planning uh with the alignment of the official plan and the Economic Development Strategic Plan, working with Dirk and his team. Uh also working with Dirk and Cindy uh with the RFP for our attainable housing study, which will be coming up. Um working with uh Strathaird Caredoc on several recent site selection inquiries. Uh Middlesex Centre with their community profile, as well as their employment lands analysis. Uh North Middlesex uh with their business and community engagement, specifically on the Park Hill and also Craig Main Street Projects. Uh working with South West Middlesex on their municipal rebranding exercise. Adelaide Medcap um as they undergo uh their CIP development. And then meeting with uh neighbouring municipalities as well, as well as Indigenous communities uh to discuss common industrial land uh demands. Next please. Oh, I also wanted to make you aware that uh just to build on the work of the Economic Resilience Task Force, we're working right now um on plans for a checkup survey. Or um uh BRE type of uh initiative. Ben's working on this right now. We'll be circulating this uh late spring. Uh county-wise and report on that and results uh will be brought back uh to County Council. Uh and these will prioritise strategic directions and inform act of initiatives at the county as well as local and regional level. And just to remind you of uh the different regional affiliations and things that we are working on. Uh as a member or partner in uh Strathering District Chamber of Commerce, the London Chamber of Commerce. Uh South Western Ontario Tourism Corporation or SWATC, uh Scores, Central Ontario Region, TIO and TIAAC. Uh both at the provincial and national level, the same with Economic Development Councils uh both uh at the provincial and national level. Also working uh with Ontario Tourism Education Council. Uh Ben's sitting on the Middlesex London Food Policy Council along with councillor Brennan. Uh we also have a great deal of engagement with the Elgin Middlesex Oxford Local Training Board. And Fanta College Advisory Councils on a couple of different uh of their programmes. So just to kind of remind you of the things that we are engaged in on an ongoing basis. Next slide please. Uh shifting over uh to Visit Middlesex and sort of the tourism arm of things, again, uh Taylor's been working on a marketing fund for this in alignment with the strategic funds. Uh first and foremost, the focus is on increasing engagement. Uh the other focuses are increasing uh brand awareness, increasing traffic and increasing partnership activity. And we'll touch on some of these things as we go forward. Next slide please. Tourism Initiative Sponsorship, this is a program that we launched um after uh the initial um tranche of tourism relief funding was uh spelled out into. Uh our communities and uh again, uh this year we'll be taking part in this as well. Uh so within the first week of announcing uh this sponsorship opportunity, we've uh proved sponsorship for three local events. Again, uh the intention of this is really to create new experiences that elevate community presence, attract visitors and support the local economy. And uh Lukin Summer Fest twenty twenty, Dorchester Golf and Country Club, Summer Bash. And the shops of St. Hands Honey and Bloom Spring Market are just a few of those. Uh there's been more since uh we put together the reports. And we're excited to see these things happening in the community and want to give uh tremendous kudos uh to our tourism providers and community. Um supporters who are looking to do new things at all times. Next slide please. Publication updates are also underway, so uh we're right now uh working together with our partners to update uh the Middlesex County Trails Guide, as well as the Middlesex County Culinary Guide. I want to uh thank Paul for starting the work on this and now pulling us through it. Um and uh so we're working together with uh many partners, including the Health Unit and uh the Conservation Authorities uh to produce these. And these will be going back out to tourism kiosks, libraries and municipal offices throughout the region uh this spring. Next please. Uh um so this was mentioned by the warden at the last meeting, but just to uh again reiterate and again, kudos to both Paul and Taylor for the work on this. Um but uh we are excited to tell you that our Discover Our Grassroots map, which was updated, of course, during the height of the pandemic. Uh at a very difficult time for all of our tourism providers um uh who are really um doing wonderful things in our community. Uh this has been announced as the Economic Development uh Council of Canada's um award winner for the recipient of a publication. And uh that will be later announced officially in the fall, but wanted to make a council aware and thank you for your support of uh. These types of publications that really promote wonderful things that are going on throughout our county. Next please. Also, you're aware of our campaign that we've worked together on over the course of the last year. Uh with uh our partners from both uh London Middlesex as well as Sarnia Lampton. So we're uh continue to be excited and see the results of our From Our Hands to Your Table uh promotion. Uh so we did a second installment of the series uh between January and March of this year. Uh again, some of the partners included in um are both of the federations of agriculture, spanning both of the counties, as well as our tourism partners and economic partners. And the Food Policy Council, uh South Western Ontario Tourism Corporation also got on board and provided a grant to bolster our marketing campaign uh this year. And uh we had uh Clock Tower Inn in Breeza Farms, as well as Rusty Ranch Brewing in the Hop House. Uh as our Middlesex featured partnerships this year, talking about the relationship they've built together. Um uh to bring uh fresh and local ingredients to the table. And uh just some highlights of the campaign, uh just this second campaign uh reached four hundred and seventy-six thousand people. Uh we had nine hundred ninety thousand impressions on this campaign. Ninety-one percent of the campaign audience was new viewers. And uh we have commitments from our partners uh for a new campaign to go out in that late summer, early fall of this year as well. So watch for that. Next slide please. Uh we're also launching a summer youth engagement project. Uh we've submitted an application to London Community Foundation's Acorn Fund for a youth grant programme. Uh this application details our wish to carry out really a fun, interactive scrap scavenger hunt. Uh that sends young residents across our county and visitors uh out supporting local businesses and promoting themselves with different Middlesex communities. So uh watch for that. Uh we'll be running that through our Goose Chase app, which is uh something very successful that we brought in over the course of the pandemic to get people out. And uh using technology uh but also visiting uh places in a a fun and safe way. So stay tuned for our social media channels for that. Next please. In terms of visit campaigns, just places to watch for us, Spotify, Postmedia, uh CTV. Um a number of different uh arena boards and uh different local publications. So just uh keep an eye for us and. Um and you'll see us in in a variety of different ways this year, as well as obviously personally at events as we can do so. Next please. Uh tourism relief funding. So you may have heard uh the most recent announcement. Uh there there has been sixty-eight point five million dollars announced for Southern Ontario. Uh through the federal uh Fed Dev Ontario uh Tourism Relief Funding. Um this uh just opened on the twelfth of April and will close on May the fifteenth. It allows for um projects uh that began in April, actually, of uh twenty twenty-one, actually, that should say, not twenty twenty-two. And the project completion date is December thirty first of this year. Incorporated businesses are eligible to apply for non-repayable grants of up to fifty percent. Of eligible project costs. Uh nonprofit in uh incorporated organisations are eligible for a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred percent. And that also extends to municipalities, uh both at the local level as well as the county level. And um that also includes Indigenous and First Nations, Mutis settlements uh and nonprofits. So uh we have been encouraging uh all of our partners uh to apply if eligible for this program. And we will be putting together an application at the county level as well. So stay tuned for that. Announcements are to take place in June uh regarding uh those that are approved for the program. But this is certainly an opportunity for all of our local municipalities engaged in tourism uh to support uh and uh access funding. Next please. So with that, just wanted to provide a bit of an update on things that we are working on or things that we have been working on, certainly available for questions at any time. And I just thank you to council and the warden for all of your support uh for uh pulling together for economic development and tourism. At what continues to be um a very interesting time as we evolve through the pandemic.
Great, thanks Kara. Thank you for that update. And you're right, it's an interesting time to be in economic development. But uh sure puts spotlight on it and it couldn't be more important than it is right now. So thank you for that report. I see councillor Vanderheiden has her hand up, so whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you through the warden. Uh good report, lots of information. Um I really like that we're highlighting success stories because especially after the two and a half years that we've had, I I think that's that's paramount. I really uh appreciate that we're talking about Ontario food clusters and food food related businesses, because that's the area we live in. Um and to that point, the fact that we're doing tourism, and we've had this discussion many times, we don't have the Niagara Falls or anything like that sitting right in our neighbourhoods. So the the tourism that we have, we have to create. And I think we're we're really on a path to doing that well. In- including um the Plan Your Escape and all of that sort of thing. I was at a birthday party on on the weekend with my um grandson who turned ten. And he got a gift from um one of his um aunts that was a surprise day out. And they that was from the city or uh you you circle an area that you want to go to and you get this documentation and and it's age-related. So if you go on, say, Thursday, this is how far you have to go and that's where you stop to do this. And it's all in envelopes and it's all surprises. You know, that's that's tourism that you're creating and inventing and still using the things that you have in your area. So things like that, I think, are amazing. The two things that I would like to see a little bit more of. First, I'd like to have some more information at some point on the uh foreign direct investment piece. Wha- what are we doing? What are we aiming for? How are how are we going to measure that? That is one of those things. It's very difficult. And I know London's had some some success over the last number of years, ten years ago or so on that with some of the businesses they've got. But just so I know where we're going with that. And I also um would like to see um down the road if we can work with our women in business. And maybe do some some highlighting of the women in business, because I know that we've heard uh a lot of um. Women that run businesses had to stay home with their families. They they lost their businesses, et cetera, et cetera. How can we support that segment of our of our um businesses? So other than that, great report and young entrepreneurs always get to support.
Okay, thank you, Joanne. Uh any other questions or comments for Kara? Okay, seeing none, then I'd like a motion that that we accept the Economic Development Q one twenty twenty-two update for information. So moved by councillor Vanderheiden, seconded by councillor Mayhew. Uh anybody against? I doubt that very highly. So I think we can go. Uh and just we just want to clean up. The clerk and I are talking. I'm just going to ask for a motion. To amend a motion we had before. And that would be for the um eleven A three audit planning report for the year. And that presentation from Ian Jeffrey, so that the I'm going to ask that the audit planning report for twenty twenty-one be received for information would be the amended motion. So looking for a mover for that. And that would be councillor Smith and seconded by councillor Vanderheiden. Anyone against? Thank you. So now we're moving on to communication strategy implementation and website launch. This is a presentation from Marcy Avantik, Legislative Services Manager Clerk. Paul Nagpitt, uh Corporate Communications Assistant, and Chris Bailey, Director of Information and Technology Services. Well done, everybody, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden Warwick. Um so we wanted to update council on the communication strategy and the launch of the new website, which is happening later this week. So the draft communication strategy was approved on council or by council on April fifth. And we have been working hard over the last few weeks to uh start implementing some of the year one recommendations. Uh there are seven recommendations that we have been working on so far. Those include onboarding a corporate communications assistant, the website redesign, corporate branding, the launch of the message framework, the rollout of council highlights. Uh recommendations related to social media and the creation of an editorial calendar. So our first focus uh was onboarding a junior communications resource. Uh so welcome to Paul and the Piggott uh council. You will recognise him. Um he's been with uh ECA, our Economic Development Department for a few years, uh and we're so thrilled to have him join us in this new role. So uh he's been doing a fantastic job and already accomplished a lot uh in a really short time. Uh so Paul, did you want to say a few words? I can't I can't see you, but.
Yeah, thank you, Marcy. Um it's a little bittersweet leaving economic development, so I love working with Kara, Taylor and Ben. But uh this is such an exciting opportunity and I'm really grateful uh that I was chosen to be in this role. And it's been amazing working with Marcy so far. And just really excited about all the projects we have coming out. So thank you so much for all the support.
So the next recommendation uh we've been working on is is the website redesign. Um the website really is the heart of the communication strategy. Uh we want the website to be the official voice of the county of Middlesex. And uh you'll see some quotes in there from the communication strategy uh that the aim of all social media posts and other digital communications uh is to drive traffic to our websites. Um so part of the communications strategy recommendations was to improve the appearance and navigation of our website. Um this was a project that was actually already underway. Um Chris Bailey's team um had initiated it. So I'm going to pass it over to to him to talk about the project from his side of things. And then Paul will go into a bit more detail about some of the new features as they relate to the communication strategy.
Thank you, Marcy, and through you, Warden, to council. Um just a quick background for everybody. In February twenty twenty, uh the county and six participating municipalities issued an RFP for web design and development. Uh Digital Echidna, at the time, it was now Northern Co, was the successful proponent. County IT and the Legislative Services Department has been working with Northern Co Digital Echidna to redevelop the county website over the past six months or so. Uh the new website is set to launch on April twenty eighth this week. Uh next slide please. It's nice for me to be able to say that to somebody else, actually. Uh a list of some new features of the site, uh refreshed layout and design. Um I'm going to show everybody after this slide. You will see a lot of similarities to many of the sites that have launched uh across most of the local municipalities. Um one of the design goals was to create a consistent look and feel between of the websites, not exactly the same, different colours, different theming. But if somebody went to one website and then bounced to another local municipality site and back to the Middlesex site, we wanted to keep things fairly consistent from a template perspective. Um enhanced security controls and updates. Uh the current Middlesex site launched seven years ago. Um and would be end of life in November, which means no more security updates. So this is a really important time to get this through. Uh enhanced search functions. Uh it can be difficult on the current site to find some things. This site brings um a new search bar that uh is is much more efficient than the previous one. There's an emergency banner system, uh again, similar to many of the local municipal sites, puts at the top of the. It's at the top of the screen. So it's really apparent right when you visit the website. We've made sure to work with Sarah Accessibility Coordinator to ensure A O D compliance. And it does incorporate the communication strategy recommendations. So yeah, I am going to share here and I can show everybody quickly. Make sure I find the right one here. There we go. So I'm just going to step through a few pages for everybody here. Here's the opening page. Again, a bit of a similar kind of look and feel, but just with some different sections. We have a whole brand new news page, which Paul and Marcy will be discussing later. Just as an example of, you know, clicking through to different spots on the site, a nice clean new look for, for these pages. Our most visited site based off of our analytics, our most visited page is the mapping page. So I wanted to make sure to find this site or this page. Council meetings and minutes. And here's just an example of a planning department, one of our departmental pages as well. So a nice, fresh, clean, new look. I, I find it a lot easier to navigate and information's a lot easier to find. So I do think it's really brought together a lot of the recommendations in the strategy. Since the strategy came a little bit after we started work on this, we've actually done a lot of changes to the site to make sure that we were going along with what that strategy recommended. I'm going to pass it back over to Marcy and Paul.
Paul, you're muted.
All right. Okay. So just with the website redesign continued, we created the new section as stated by Chris and Marcy. So we have three new different categories, statements, media releases and service updates. All based from the strategy from Boulevard and Heron. And then we've made sure to transfer all of the job opportunities and the career section of the website to their proper formats. And we've also consolidated subscribe news, subscribe to news, jobs alerts and et cetera. So I'll just be hopping on to the website right now just to show you. So here's the new section and here's the three categories that I've mentioned before. And each of the content here is categorized from that one. So it can be filtered out. So if you want statements, actually, we don't have any statements. So we have some service updates here. So as you could see, this is the road closure that Ryan sent out earlier that I posted. And then you go into it, you can embed all the content. So you can put the photo. You can also embed the little blurb in there and it have an option to attach the PDF. And then the nice thing about this website is you can easily share this content on Facebook. So if one of the councillors are on a time crunch, they could just click the Facebook button over here and you'll get the okay, there you go. So you'll just have like the, the link over here with a photo. And then you can say something real quick and then you can just share it on your social media page right away. And then back to the subscribe page, which is down here. We have inputted the M P P A blurb on here and then that you can tell them people to unsubscribe anytime while when they see our emails. And then you can see the email list here, which is also with the titles also directly in line with the communication strategy. So we have job opportunities, news procurement and service updates. And as our department grows and maybe all of our other programming, we're hoping to expand this list. And people who put their emails up here, they'll, they'll go into campaign monitor and will be able to send out all the things that these describe for.
Great. Thank you, Paul. And so the next recommendation we've been working on is really to develop a brand manual for Middlesex County that will specify brand colors, fonts, logo placement. So that is something that we're hoping to bring in May. And that, that those guidelines will incorporate requirements for document accessibility as well as design. So that's really exciting for the clerk to have all of our publications to be accessible. So the style tile from the website is, is going to be the foundation for this. And this will ensure a consistent look between the website and all of our social, or all of our media products. So Paul will talk a little bit about what he's already created in terms of templates using the style tile.
Yeah. So as you can see, the style tile is here and the main font that we have is inter. And I've just been creating the same media templates for the same categories that we have on the website. So we have a major release template here, a statement of the word in here, and then another service and information update template. So these will be emailed out to all of our subscribers and to people at the, at the media contacts. So these can also be shared amongst other people and will be A O D A accessible. And yeah, we can also, as I mentioned before, we can also input them as PDFs within the content of the website. So hopefully we'll be able to get moving on all these and create new content.
And so the, the next recommendation is the rollout of the messaging framework, which was set out in our communication strategy. So going forward, all of our publications are going to be designed to support the central message or the supporting messages that are detailed on the slide and in the strategy. So that's officially rolled out and very exciting for us.
Oh, one thing I forgot to mention too, Marcy, from these media templates, we also have outlines that we received from Erin. So over here, she has, she gave us outlines of how to put like an effective media release. So there's like a title headline and then there's a subheading and then we have a little like insert content for paragraph one. And she'll give us like, she gave us just little blurbs about the type of information that we should ponder, which is also really great. So it's the same thing for the statement along with the service updates as well.
Thank you. And then, sorry, so we're launching council highlights this week, which is again exciting. That will be launching when the website launches on Thursday and we'll send an email out to all of council so that you can find it easily on the website and hopefully share it to social media. And we'll also be sending it all to the local clerks as well. So they can be, the highlights can be posted on local agendas. And that way we're going to be getting council decisions out there in a timely manner. Again, as per the communication strategy, so.
Yeah. So here's just the council highlight template here. So the idea of this is just to have a title and that title will just have the summary of of what happened. So even if they read, if, even if they don't read that summary, that title would just say everything about that. And then just going to the website, I, we do have a sample council highlight here. So we have, I incorporated a little graphic here. And then, so it would be something similar like this. Where we would have the title and then just a little short summary of everything that happened in council. And then moving on to social media. So taking on this role, I'll be the one doing most of the social media work now. And so as part of the strategy, we've discontinued the Rhodes Twitter account, which I didn't even know that we had. But we decided to incorporate all those into the, all those updates into our main channels. So as you could see, there's the first road closure content post here. And then we're also setting up corporate accounts on emerging platforms using the app Middlesex County handle on TikTok and Snapchat, more so to prevent misuse. We're just focusing on growing our current channels now than, and then maybe down the line, we'll be able to maybe we will be able to use them. And so just looking at the rose closure here, as Bill said, so this post actually got a reach of fourteen thousand. So that's really great. And we're hoping to keep this momentum going. Because we want to be that main source for people to come to the county and see all, all the information available.
So the final recommendation we've been working on, and that's in progress, is the creation of an editorial calendar. So over the next few weeks, we're going to be meeting Paul and myself with all the departments to talk about their communications needs and how we can support that and really start moving. You've, you've been seeing probably more from us those past few weeks in social media and you're going to be seeing a lot more as we keep moving forward. And then in May twenty twenty two, hopefully we'll be providing the design guidelines to council as well as a media relations policy and a council levels of service document. Those are coming from, still phase three, actually, of the RFP. Erin from Boulevard Strategy Group is working on a few, on the media relations policy and the levels of service document. So, so all of this will be coming at you. Lots of communication stuff in the, the coming months, but we're really excited. So with that, I will say thank you to council for your time. And if you have any questions, Paul, Chris or I are happy to answer.
All right. Thank you, Marcy, Paul and Chris. Exciting times ahead and I'm really looking forward to seeing what's coming in the future and especially this week with our new website. So I know Kathy Burkhart-Jessen, you had a councillor Justin, you had a question and then councillor Vanderheiden.
Great. And thank you through the warden. To the team, congratulations and thank you so much. This is really an exciting report. I can't believe how quickly you've moved on some of the initiatives that came out of the communications report or the communications, yeah, report that we adopted not too long ago. You know, this, in some ways, as I say, you've moved so quickly, but it's been a long time coming. Certainly I know, and I don't mean to, you know, step on councillor Smith's feet if he's, if he was going to say something. But certainly I know when, when Curtis was warden, he started to talk about a communication strategy. And then of course, when I was warden, saw really the importance of this. And so to see this today and to see what you've been able to accomplish and put together, congratulations. I think this is really exciting for Middlesex County and I'm really looking forward to watching everything roll out. Well, in the coming days, I guess, April twenty eighth, it's not that far away. But no, the coming, the coming days, weeks and months ahead. So congratulations, team. Well done.
Thank you.
All right, councillor Vanderheiden.
Thank you through the warden. Two, two questions. One, the council summary, when, when that goes up, is there a way to incorporate in that summary the links to the document that would highlight that, that particular statement? So say one of them, it says, you know, council passed budget twenty twenty two. And then if there was a link in there that people could just like link right into the actual budget so that they didn't have to go backtrack and look somewhere else for the budget, that, that, that's just my own thought process on how that would make it easier for a user, user friendly site. The second question I have, I wonder if at some point we need to have a visioning session for all of us old timers to get really familiar with our site, how it works, how we utilize it. And then also because we're going to have more communication on sites like Twitter. And I know we've got one expert on council, but the rest of us are not experts on what it is that we can do to, to move things forward, to highlight the success of the county or to pass forward communications that are really important. We all do it to a degree. But maybe down the road, and this might be an after election thing, but it's something that, to, to get us all on the same page. To be, to be a little bit more proficient at it.
Maybe I can take that one, Marcy. The, we did do a session, as you recall, a few years ago, just on general. Some of the general things you talked about, but we, part of the strategy is to get drilled down, get more specific. And yes, I think you're bang on in that this is probably, this is something that I had been planning to do and part of the orientation for the new council. Especially since we're rolling out a policy for you to follow as well. But we may want to think about bumping that up if we think we have time in our agenda. Warden, so we'll give that some consideration, but I'm, I'm thinking it's going to be like part of a visioning session where we spend a good two hours on some of the strategies and, and new policies. It's not going to be a quick thing. So we'd want to take our time. And so maybe the warden and I can look for a time before the election instead of waiting until after.
And I think you had a question, Joanne, about a hyperlink with the communications piece?
Yeah, I think we're on that too, though, Warden. That one's going to be fine. But Marcy, maybe you want to take a run at that?
Yeah, thank you, Bill and, and Warden. Yeah, that's absolutely possible. And, and the plan is to, as the website has more and more content to either link maybe directly to the report or directly to the page about the service and information on the website, that to the specific department. So absolutely, we will do that and make it as user friendly and easy to navigate as possible.
Okay, thank you. And so I'm going to ask council now for a motion that the communication strategy implementation and website launch presentation be received for information. So I can't see everybody on, I can see Kathy. So councillor Burkhart-Jessen. And I can't see anybody else. Oh, there we go. Councillor Smith, your hand was up for secondary and I imagined, I don't think there's anybody against, but if you are, hold your hand up. See nobody. Moving on now, and we're just going to have a little bit of a change in our agenda because Brett's got some things to attend to there. So we're just going to quickly go over to eleven B two tender for the HVAC capital budget project. And that's a report from Brett Kerwin's Thriftir Lodge Administration. So whenever you're ready, Brett.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you, Brent. All good.
Sorry, I think my internet froze. Thank you, Madame Warwick. To council, just, I'm going to preface my report by saying we're about to do a fire drill here. So things could get loud. But nonetheless, I'm going to proceed. Council will recall discussing this HVAC project last year. Last year, it was announced that the lodge would be getting over two point two million dollars to substantially upgrade its HVAC system. Upgrading the HVAC system will address some of the ongoing cooling system deficiencies here at the lodge, particularly with regard to our second floor on hot, humid days. The project, of course, will benefit us in terms of upgrading a lot of our aging equipment, which is now about sixteen years old. Originally, the timeframes set by the funder were extremely tight, but later last year, the timelines were significantly extended such that we don't actually have to complete the project now until the end of December twenty twenty three. Nonetheless, to get the ball rolling in terms of starting the project, we did a recent request for tenders document and posted that on the bids and tenders website as per county purchasing policy. We did get three bids in response to that tender and we evaluated those bids in conjunction with our proposed project consultant. Based on that bid devaluation outcome, the recommendation is that the bid submitted by Lind Mechanical Incorporated of Strathroy be accepted. Happy to entertain any questions in support of that recommendation.
Council, any questions for Brent? I think that'll be a great relief to you and your staff and the residents when that's all in place. So it's great to hear that it's moving forward. So can I get a mover for this, please? That would be councillor Rob, seconded by councillor Richards. Anyone against? Just certainly hope not. And carried. So now we're going to go back again to eleven A six, More Homes for Everyone Act, provincial changes through bill one oh nine. And Dirk, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madame Warden. If someone can bring up the presentation. And while they're doing that, I, I should note that when I first drafted this, the intention was that, because the, the province was initially consulting until the end of April. It was to get discussion and feedback. The province did go ahead and pass the bill a couple of weeks ago, notwithstanding the consultation phase. So it is, it is what it is now. So next slide. The More Homes for Everyone Act does tackle a, a number of areas. You know, in this has been an immediate in terms of real estate rules and some of those things. But this presentation just focuses on what they call the less red tape, more home section, which is really changes to the planning act. Next slide, please. In terms of county council, I'll highlight those as, of course, your primary interests. And then I'll just mention a few areas that will come to the local level also. But in terms of the provinces, the approval authority for the county's official plan and frankly, for the upcoming official plan amendment. The province has a hundred and twenty day review period for those documents. They've changed the legislation now that they, they have the discretion to pause that timeline if they chose to, if they choose to. And also they can refer any county official plan amendments to the O L T now. And I understand that they have suspended all timelines for anything that's already before the province to give them more time as they work through those. Next slide, please. to give them more time as they work through those. Next slide, please. Something that's called incentivize municipalities to make timely decisions. And it applies, there has been some, this has been misrepresented in the media a little bit. It does only apply to zoning by law amendments and site plans. But essentially, starting next year, municipalities will have to refund application fees if the timelines are not met. And so, for instance, for a site plan, if you don't meet 60 days, you have to give back 50% of the fee and then 25% the next month, and another 25%. Next slide, please. Site plan control, a number of changes there. Additional complete application requirements have been added to the act. But most significantly, all local municipalities must delegate the authority to approve site plans from council to local municipalities, and that has to be in place by July 1st. So we'll be working with your staff and your building officials to tackle that. And then, as I mentioned, in 2023, refunds would be required if municipalities are unable to make that 60-day timeline for a site plan and a number of other technical changes. Next slide, please. Plans of subdivision and condominium where county council is the approval authority. There's not a lot of changes, but they, the minister has, is allowed now to prescribe matters that cannot be included as conditions of draft plan approval. And that really is, from what I've read, is to deal with sort of what they call scope creep, where municipalities want to include additional matters. They haven't provided any details yet, so it's hard to, to really evaluate that. I think a positive thing, they have, will now allow the county within a five-year time period to reactivate a lapse plan of subdivision or condominium where previously a developer would have to restart the process. So there may be some benefit to that. Next, please. Sorry, next slide. Something new has been added to the act called the Community Infrastructure and Housing Accelerator. And really, what it is, it's, you're familiar with an MZO, Minister's Zoning Order. It's sort of a, an MZO light that would allow a local municipality, not the county, to request the province to approve what is essentially a zoning by law amendment and outside of the full process of the planning act. It's not subject to appeal, and the minister can include conditions and exemptions from subsequent planning approvals. And, and from what the, the indication is from the province, it's really to speed the provision of housing. Next slide. A number of other changes. Things like municipalities are mandatory now to do more frequent reviews of community benefit charges, development charges, and smaller items like posting that information on your website, et cetera. Next slide, please. So in terms of our initial thoughts, as it relates to county council, you know, as the slide says, in contrast to the, the sort of hard timelines for local municipalities, the province is giving themselves an out for official plans and can refer to the OLT. So that, there is that implication for the county council, of course. It doesn't, the changes don't generally affect county council approval files, although there are timing requirements for zoning by law amendments and how those would relate to a plan of subdivision that are problematic. And at last council meeting, I had, there was an application next to Tem Center and I kind of gave, mentioned it to council that took about a year, I think quite appropriately, from application to the point where Tem Center Council were supportive of it. That won't be possible for the zoning by law amendment anymore, or the municipality will have to make a deliberate decision to take that additional time, but doing so knowing that they would have to refund the application fee. Next slide. So I think it puts municipalities in a difficult position, to be frank. There's going to be pressure to do things very quickly. And at the same time, you may find yourself refunding application fees and therefore having less resources. There have been no changes to the legislation in terms of, I use the term, maybe not the best term, pinch points, but, you know, a, a, two month to do a site plan. If there's an extensive engineering peer review that needs to be done, it's hard to get consultants to do that review, get it back to the applicant, go back and forth in that time period. Other authorities like railways, you know, they're not, they don't necessarily respond in a week or two. So I think municipalities are going to have to make deliberate decisions to either approve or deny zoning by law amendments. Or, as I said already, there may be cases where a decision, that's no longer my slide, a decision is made to not proceed within the timeframe, knowing that there would be a refund. In terms of one other little item, community improvement plans that municipalities are undertaking. And Kara mentioned, highlighted this earlier. There are times where CIP actually refunds fees. I think we're going to have to look at all of those rules to make sure that you're not refunding a fee that's also been refunded already by not making the timeline. Next slide. We're already embarking on the digital planning system, thanks to county council's approval and the provincial funding for that. So I, I think that will assist in many respects, but we do have to sort of pivot and change the project to reflect some of the changes. As I said earlier, it is difficult to evaluate a lot of the changes because the regulations aren't released. And so we just don't know what, what it will be in the end. But overall, I, I do think it's, it's limits municipality's ability to sort of take in an application and then work with an applicant and go back and forth. And I, you know, give the example of, you know, Strathroy Care Doc usually on larger files will have an open house and then a public meeting, and then council will make a decision at a subsequent meeting. That likely won't be possible in, to meet the timelines of the act as put in place through Bill 109. Next slide, or maybe that's the last one. So Madam Warden, that's a very quick overview, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and you're right. It is a quick overview for something that's really going to affect us quite, quite dramatically. And when we're looking at these approvals coming towards us and knowing that we have to wait on CN or CP or Conservation Authority to make a comment, and that ends up hitting us in the pocket, it will be an interesting way to think, go forward. So I see two hands up already. Joanne, whenever you're ready, you can ask your question.
Thank you through the warden. Bill 109, I, I, I am not impressed with any of what's going down here. I really am not. I think the fact, the very fact from your first statement where the consultation process was supposed to be longer, and that was just cut off. And, and this is supposed to be something that's helping us. I don't see any help here. I think this is a deflection. And this is my own opinion, not county council's opinion. I think this is a deflection in something that's a, a knee-jerk reaction to housing and, and the lack of. And it's, it's, it's not going to, the consequences of some of the decisions that are going to be made, I think are going to be huge for us, and I'm, I'm not, not impressed with that. The reason in Strathroy Care Doc, we do two or three planning meetings on particular things. One, we, we let the developer put their own open house out so they can have a conversation with the public and get some of the things ironed out before it even gets to our official public meeting. So, you know, it's been a real process to, to help us streamline and get rid of some of the hiccups before we even move it forward. So it's too bad that we can't, that's not going to be, that's going to be limited. I think where they could have had a little bit more effort is in the NIMBYism. And that's the thing that goes to all these OLTs and whatever they call them anymore. That's what puts delays on as well, including what the warden said, engineers, consultants, conservation authorities, we have no control over that whatsoever. And now you're going to ask us to send back money that's put in place in order to help municipalities pay for our planners, pay for all the time it puts that we, that we need to use to put into these plans. I think the appeals are going to, the appeals process has been sort of left to the side. I think a lot of the authority on all of these things that's in our communities has now been taken out of our hands because it, it just, that's just what it seems to me. And the only good thing I see is the lapsed plan piece where maybe we, we don't have to go through the whole process again and putting a lapsed plan back in place. That's the only positive I've seen all of this. Those are just comments. I, you have no answers to any of that, I'm sure. But I, I think this is frightening for municipalities, and there's opportunity there for people to take us to court.
Counselor Burkhart-Jessen, go ahead.
Great, and thank you through the warden. I sent, I sent Counselor Vanderhaiden a text halfway through the meeting saying we have the same notes. So, because she took a number of the comments that I had. I, I do think that much of what came out of this bill is knee-jerk reaction and pushing it through for a variety of reasons, the obvious, I don't think I have to state. But I think, I mean, this is what we have today. And I think we can all speak to the efficiencies that our communities have made in the planning process. Counselor Vanderhaiden spoke about what's happening in Strathroy, certainly in Lucan. I know that our staff has done, done things to, to try to compact the process and, and make sure that we're working efficiently with those bringing it applications in. So, you know, I can see that perhaps maybe this is maybe targeted at, at, at larger centers, urban, more urban centers. But that's, that's not for us to debate at this moment. I guess coming out of this, and I'm assuming that my colleagues have the same concerns that I do, that, that Joanne's just voiced. So like going forward, I mean, I, I might say to Dirk, you know, in six months from now, or, or eight months from now, maybe that's, maybe that's more of a timeline and is to come back to council with a report on, on where we are and how we've been able to work through this plan. Because the only way that we're going to be able to go to our colleagues at the provincial level and say, this is not working for our communities, is to have, you know, to have concrete documentation as to how, when these applications are coming in, is this, is this bill really realistic to move business forward? And is what they're trying to achieve, what they were trying to achieve with this bill, is it actually going to happen? And so what I would maybe say to Dirk is, just in the back of your mind, look at a way to, to try to document what's happening and then bring a report back to us. Is it successful or hasn't it been successful?
Okay, thank you. Dirk, do you have any comments back to that?
No, I, I would say, well, two quick things, I guess, is, you know, there's sort of the immediate thing on site plans and delegation. So I know I was touched with Arnie in text. We're going to talk and kind of move forward to some of those technical things immediately. We've got a little bit of time towards, before the end of the year to sort of get things in place. Not to say that we can't, if there are improvements. And I mentioned in just one of the slides, I was talking to Tim and Jennifer in Strathroy about this. Just, you know, even letter checklist, some of those things that, you know, even if we can shave a few days off here and there, I think we need to kind of reexamine all of that. And then I'm going to challenge staff, I think we need to do probably a better job of, you know, recording that. Oh, you know, we received on this date, we, you know, provided engineering comments to a, to the applicant on such and such a date. And then they take 30 days to review it and just record those timelines so that we can sort of demonstrate that, you know, yes, it does take municipalities a certain amount of time to deal with things. But there's also those other times that are in, that are built into it, whether it's CN or frankly, the applicant. There's often, you know, time that applicants take to, to do things, just part, just the practicality. The economy is so busy right now, it's hard to get consultants to do work in a kind of a timely way. So, but good, good, all good points.
Counselor DeVet, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden, through you to Dirk. Thank you for that report. It is frankly depressing because I think for the most part municipalities work hard to make sure things move forward. It's not a game. It's something that we're doing to make sure that the proper processes are there to make sure that ultimately residents get good areas to live in and good quality homes to live in, and that, that's all. It, it's not, there's no deliberate foot dragging. It's working with residents, as you said, let's work together to figure out solutions for things. The only thing that I, I've thought about, and I don't know, I don't even know if it's possible, but for example, we're going to have service agreements with CAS. Do we set service level standards based on Bill 109 and say, we understand you're busy, we're busy too, but we need this kind of turnaround on these kinds of documents? I don't know. I mean, I don't want to be a big brother or a bully or, or push around our partners in other areas either. But I don't know how this gets done if we're not all working together. And, I mean, ultimately, I guess the goal is good. We need more homes for people, but at the same time, this is, to me, is a really kind of politicized process at this point. It sandwiches municipalities in the middle. So I don't know, are there risk mitigation strategies we can think about? Are there service level agreements we can implement? I don't know what we do. I, I think we have to try and work together with our partners, but I'm not sure the capacity is there at any level to, to do the kind of thing that I'm reading between the lines is expected. So for what that's worth, that's my two cents.
Thank you. And, and two things, yeah, the CAS are facing the same thing. Exactly Bill 109 is affecting them as well. And also, I always find that, you know, when you try and make a plan to take out red tape, it usually involves more red tape, to take out the red tape. So I think that's exactly what we're dealing with here. Any other comments or questions about this? Seeing none, then I'd like a mover for the, the plans for, for More Homes for Everyone changes through Bill 109 be received for information. And that is Kathy Burkhart-Jessen moved, seconder. Counselor DeVet, all in favor? Or no, you know what? Just whoever's against it, passed. Thank you. So moving now back on to Dirk again, and that is 11B1, the proposed plan of condominium municipality of Tem Center, file number 39TCCDM2T102, Donnybrook Industrial Condominium. Go ahead, Dirk, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I'll be quick. And this one pretty much met the timeline. This is an industrial plan of condominium that would create six vacant land units on a 15-acre property, and this is the Donnybrook Industrial Area. That's along the 401. The lands are designated and zoned for those employment or, or industrial uses, and it's on the south side of County Road 78, Donnybrook Drive, right at, almost at Westchester Born. So it is an area that's already undergoing industrial development, and an agency ministry of circulation was undertaken. And really, the comments and the conditions are to satisfy the municipality and the county engineer. The, my report gives a short overview. There's a longer report from the municipality attached. And, but in the end, I was satisfied that it is consistent with the provincial policy statement. It conforms with the county's official plan and does represent good land use planning. And then the strategic focus items are highlighted also. So in the end, I am recommending draft plan approval subject to conditions.
Any questions or comments? During, seeing none, I have a motion that says that the proposed plan of condominium be granted draft plan approval subject to conditions and a notice of decision be circulated as required by the Planning Act and that the notice of decision indicate that all written submissions received on the application were considered, the effect of which helped make an informed recommendation and decision. Mover? Deputy Mary Elliott, oh, sorry, Counselor Elliott, seconder? Counselor Canilson, and anyone against? Seeing none, so moved. Thank you. So no, moving on to correspondence and information items. And the first one you have is electronic payments, March 2022. And that the move, the motion there is at 11, that item 11C1 be received for information. So Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Brennan. Anyone opposed? Yes, when, when opposed, Counsel Vanderhaiden. Anyone else? Okay, so carried. The correspondence, we have 11C2 all the way down to 11C13. That is just, looks like we receive and, and file. Is there any of those that a council wish to discuss separately? So from 11C2 all the way to 11C13, then I'll have a mover to accept them as reported. Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Mayhew. Anyone against? And then 11C14. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that one was pulled out.
Yeah, no, I was pulling that one out because it's got a lot of red writing underneath it. So I wanted to make sure we got that one. So 11C14 is proposed letter to Minister of Education regarding the T, Thames Valley District School Board of Trustees from Rural Education Task Force. And Counselor Elliott, I see Counselor Canilson's hand up, so I'll let you go first. And then Counselor Elliott, did you have a comment too? Okay, so Adrian, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just wanted to make a council aware of this letter that I've been asked to sign. It was been, it's a, it's a version of a letter that has been sent by trustee Morrell to the ministry requesting investigation into the board and its governance model. The, as many of you know, and I think the letter is kind of self-explanatory. The, the committee was established by the board. There's administrative staff and staff trustees and members of local councils, county councils appointed to this committee. We were tasked with exploring the education system in the county, consulting with the communities, members of the public, developing recommendations and collaborating with administrative staff as well, and presenting these recommendations to the and presenting these recommendations to the board. As you will recall, uh, the draft report was brought to county council, uh, but it was not accepted by the board at that time. Interesting enough, since that time, the board has shared that draft report, which they described as being flawed and incomplete with the indigenous community and other areas as well. Based on that and and the manner that, and and also that the fact that several hundred people in our communities were consulted and participated and and presented and provided information to develop these recommendations, and the voices have not been heard. There is a, a belief that, uh, there needs to be an investigation into the manner in which the board and administration, uh, refused to accept this report. So I'm, but I have been asked to sign it, and given that I've been asked to sign it as a member of county council, and that I've been appointed this task force by county council, I felt I wanted to get some feedback from, from all of you around the horseshoe in what your thoughts are of signing this correspondence to the ministry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I think you're correct, when you are, um, when you're selected as a member of county council to work on something, you do have to have, I would say you would have to have county council's approval before we, we release anything. So, uh, Counselor Elliott, did you want to make a comment?
Uh, sure, uh, through you, uh, Warden, I fully support the letter, uh, that is going out, it is being signed as well. Um, has already been signed by, um, the Oxford representative Marcus Ryan, as well as um, the Elgin representative, uh, Sally Martin. Um, the letter is completely fact-based on what happened, uh, through the Rural Education Task Force in which we appointed uh, Adrian too. Um, there's, it's not an opinion-based, it goes through step by step, um, how staff um, put up roadblocks into this task force, um, had stopped work into this task force and essentially um, led it to where it cannot be completed and got to the point where it got to the trustees and the task force is now dissolved with the work not even being completed yet. Um, and Counselor Cornelissen, um, how he said the voices in our community, uh, have been lost in this task, and the task force being dissolved, uh, as well as this report not being completed, uh, is very accurate, uh, as many of you know, um, Mayor Ryan and I have hosted, uh, two public meetings so far, um, where we've had over a hundred attendees, um, attend these public meetings, um, where the members of the public are outraged and upset at the way that this was handled, that they feel like their voices have been lost, that the that their concerns for what's happening in our rural schools are not being taken seriously. Um, and the fact that this letter simply asks for an investigation from the Ministry of Education on how it was handled, I think is an absolutely appropriate road, uh, to go down.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Vanderheden.
Yes, thank you, um, I concur, I, I, this is really reminiscent to me of days gone by when we had school reviews in the county, and I remember, uh, we had public consultations day after day. We had all kinds of, uh, opportunity, we went to the school board, spoke in front of the school board, and, uh, this is, uh, no word of a lie, I remember when I was standing in front of the school board trustees at that point, they, some of them had their newspaper up, reading the newspaper, nobody was listening to rural views and the rural rural perspective of education, it's different than cities. And that's why we have to have a voice, and I totally support, um, putting a letter forward to say, let's, let's get this checked out.
Okay, um, just regard, like, I, you know, I've been following along this closely and have attended some meetings and different things like that. And Adrian, I think this is one of those situations where you happily sign up for something and it turns into something else. And, um, and that's how I feel it's happened, like, we, you know, you're on something fairly innocuous, like a rural task force looking for recommendations to make sure that our rural population is represented well and spoken for. And then all of a sudden, now we're in a bit of a battle, and the only concern I have with the letter, and, and, and I like the idea of sticking up for the rural task force, I like the idea of supporting our rural area. It just the tone of the letter is slightly uncomfortable. And, and that's the only thing I'm going to say, it's, it's, it concerns me, it may not produce the results that we're actually looking for. Um, there seems to be a problem with governance, and I think that's, you know, where the problem lays, that's the actual disease, like, the, the letter is the, you know, the decline of the rural task force report is a symptom of the disease, the disease is somewhere else. I just find it hard as a governance model to criticize another governance model, and, and that's the only place where I feel uncomfortable. I, I agree with the sentiment, I agree with what we're doing, I just, the tone of the letter concerns me a little bit, but that's personally my opinion, and I'm just throwing it out there. Counselor Burkhart-Jessen.
Thank you, and through the warden, um, I, I don't, um, I want to put Adrian on this, or Counselor Cornelissen on the spot, but maybe through the warden, I guess I would ask, you've come to count, you've come to county council to ask what, what the direction we should go, but are you comfortable signing the letter in this form? Because I agree absolutely with, with what Counselor Elliott, Counselor Vanderheden has said. Um, I think we've already jumped into this when we, um, endorsed, um, releasing the Rural Task Force, uh, paper. Um, but I also agree with what Counselor Warwick has said in that the tone of the letter, I, I find very confrontational, and I don't think it's going to get what we want out of this. And so Mike, I guess my question to, to Adrian, number one is, do you feel comfortable e- even doing this? And number two, I guess, is there an, would there be an appetite to maybe draft our own version of a letter that, um, can be signed by, uh, Counselor Cornelissen?
Well, thank you, through the warden, uh, to Counselor Burkhart-Jessen, yes, absolutely. Uh, I shared with, uh, with Marcus and Sally that, uh, I would be comfortable signing a letter in its current form were I not identified as a member of county council. But signing it as a member of county council in its current form, uh, I feel that, uh, there, there could be some modifications made to the letter. Uh, I did have a co- a conversation with our, with Bill, our CEO earlier today, as well as with our warden prior to this. And I know Bill has some thoughts on, uh, on composing our own correspondence, which, uh, which I feel wo- would be an appropriate response as well. And I don't know, Bill, if you ever want to speak to that now, or, uh, what your thoughts are.
Sure, I, I guess I'll just tell them what I said to you, Adrian, I, I said that traditionally, signing on to another letter is something this council hasn't done. Like, I don't remember us doing this in a really, really long time, we've generally developed our own letter. Um, I too was uncomfortable with the tone of the letter, and so I think that's something I expect, expressed to Adrian, I, I really do understand the frustration. Um, but I expressed that to Adrian early on, and, um, and Adrian also mentioned to me that there is an expectation that perhaps the, the, uh, three counties could be uh, asked to develop a letter at some point to follow up on this anyway. So, um, what I suggested to him today was that we maybe take the opportunity, if, if this is a time-ish, timely issue, we could, you know, by the end of the week, the warden and I could have something drafted up for her signature. It, the other thing that's also unusual is for county council to endorse something to go out the door that isn't on the warden's signature. Uh, that is unusual as well, uh, from a process point of view. So I think process is one thing, tone is another, and, um, we, we probably could do it in a more traditional Middlesex fashion, if you like, um, very quickly, or we could do it the way that's been presented, I'm, I'm trying either way, but those are my thoughts to Adrian today.
Muted, Counselor Justin, go ahead.
Just follow up, um, and I don't know, um, you know, from a, from a process point here, whether you want to motion, but I would, I, I think, um, kind of following the direction that, that Bill just outlined. Um, you know, a more Middlesex County approach, uh, to a letter, and, you know, I think, you know, signed by, uh, the warden, also signed by, um, Counselor Cornelissen, um, as a member of the rural, uh, task force, uh, Rural Education Task Force, um, I think that puts some weight behind it, um, and it will probably be more in keeping with who we are.
Yeah, I would, I would feel more comfortable with a letter that is ours, and, and I would say that Counselor Cornelissen and Counselor Elliott have a lot of information that they can put in the letter to create our own letter that I would happily sign and, and take, take that responsibility. So if that's an option that council want to pursue, you know, I'd be more than happy to follow that path as well. And I see, uh, Counselor Rops' hand up, and then Counselor Vanderheden's hand as well.
Hey, thank you through the warden, uh, I was very glad to hear your comments, Warden, uh, on your thoughts on this, because I share that as well, and I would be much happier to see us form a letter with a little different language to it uh, as well, I would support that, I, I have a little bit of a struggle Adrian having to so, to sign a letter on behalf of Middlesex County. So I would support the, uh, the change in it and send a made-in-Middlesex solution to a letter.
Okay, um, I believe, um, Counselor Vanderheden and Counselor DeVit, did you have your hand up as well?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. So, Joanne, you're first.
Thank you, through the warden, did Counselor, um, Burkhart-Jessen make that a motion? Because if she did, I would absolutely say I would second the motion of putting a letter together and moving it forward that way.
I haven't made it yet.
Oh, okay.
Uh, because I didn't know about the process, sorry to interrupt, but I would be happy to when the time comes.
Okay, then I'll second that when you make that motion.
Okay, we're all planned ahead, so let's go to Counselor DeVit.
Nothing totally unique here, I just want to say appreciate, um, our CAO's comments on process, I think that is probably the way to do it. Um, and our goal here is to communicate a message, and I wouldn't want it to get lost in any kind of, um, kerfuffle, this is, uh, standard, and it's going to be clear, and we're going to get our point across, so that's my objective and goal here too.
Yep, a- and as I said before, I totally support that the rural task force and the work behind it. I support that good governance, um, I do want to be able to have it in our, in the county of Middlesex words too. So I think that, you know, if, if we can go back to the drawing board and get the input of Counselor Cornelissen, Counselor Elliott, um, CEO Rayburn, and then myself to sign that, you know, to work on that letter, I'd be more than happy to go through with that. Um, so Counselor, I'm just gonna get your comments on that.
Um, yeah, I will support, if council wants to write a letter on behalf of Middlesex County, I'll absolutely support that and help, um, with the information that I know.
Okay, all right, so I believe, is there any other discussion around the table about this? Is that your hand, sorry, Counselor Mayhew?
Thank you, Madam Warden, uh, South West Middlesex, uh, enjoyed hosting, uh, one of the, uh, public meetings, and, uh, we had good attendance, we had good engagement, and, uh, I totally support, uh, the Rural Tasks Force, uh, endeavor in, uh, legitimizing, um, the needs for rural areas to, uh, advocate for, uh, rural education, particularly with Thames Valley. I have heard that, uh, one of the criticisms against the Rural Task Force was what that they were asked to provide a report to the board. And yet they, uh, they, uh, distributed that report publicly prior to distributing it to the board. And I'm wondering if there's any legitimacy to that. Uh, would Kelly or Adrian like to address that, that, uh, uh, their, uh, their findings were presented publicly prior to be, being presented, uh, to Thames Valley Board? Uh, do you feel any legitimacy to that?
I- in all due respect, Counselor Mayhew, I think we covered a lot of this information initially when the first letter went out. And I think if you want some more background information, I'm sure, uh, Counselor Cornelissen can help you with any of that information that you, you need to have. And, and just for the interest of time, I think what we'll do is we'll move along, um, and again, Counselor Mayhew, forgive me, but it's just, I, I know we can give you all the information you need on a different platform, uh, later on. So, you know, just for the sake of time, we've got a mover, and, um, have you crafted something up that would be suitable for the clerk? Um, Counselor Burkhart-Jessen?
Uh, no, I haven't. But, uh, um, I, I think, um, Marcy or Marcy can probably help.
We can, we can help here, yeah.
The idea is that I'd like to move that, um, that we send a letter, uh, to the province, um, to mirror the sentiment of the letter that's in our package, um, but to be, uh, crafted um, in a made-in-Middlesex way. And Marcy can clean up the clerking language.
All right, and then we have a seconder? Okay, Counselor Vanderheden, any other comments or questions before we move on?
I just want to thank everyone for the input, thank you.
Okay, all right, uh, anyone against this? So moved. So now we're moving on to, uh, oh, I've got to clean up here, we've got eleven C fifteen that I, um, need a mover and a seconder to accept that report. And, and yeah, but that's a different one, right? You want to do it together? Okay, so we, I have got the okay to go eleven C fifteen and eleven C sixteen together. So looking for a mover to receive those for information, and that would be Counselor Mayhew, seconded by Counselor Richards, all in favor? Oh, sorry, against, nobody against, moving on, so moved. Uh, inquiries, um, new business, announcements, which we've already had before, now we have to, um, go into close questions, right? So we're gonna rise from the committee of the whole.
All right, sorry, Madam Warden, I did have one, uh, under inquiries.
Yes. Hi, Mr. Hando's. Just, just yell next time, that's much better.
I hate to do that, you're doing a great job. Um, just wanted to, actually, you know, I keep saying we have to talk about success stories and people that do things well, so I want to do that. Um, um, last week, Friday, I think it was, um, or Saturday, I don't know, um, Marcy, um, our clerk was, uh, in a meeting with me with the, uh, regarding the election school where we receive funding from FCM. The election school was, was done, I believe, very, very well, we were the first ones out of the block. So they were just, you know, picking our brain to find out how, what, everybody else should learn from what we've done, et cetera, et cetera. Marcy did a phenomenal job representing us in that meeting. Um, you're very professional, and the things that you brought to the table, um, were excellent, so kudos to Marcy.
Very good. Okay, so, did I get that motion yet to rise from, uh, okay. Phew, and so we're going to now rise from that at three fifty PM, and I'm looking for a mover. And that would be Counselor Vanderheden, second of a Counselor Richards, and I'm sure everyone's in favor of that, so moved. So now I need a motion to go into, oh, Greg's gonna do his report first, okay. So Greg, you've been patiently waiting, and it's finally your time to shine, so whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you, uh, Warden, and through you to the council, I do have a report here, um, in regard to the payroll services project, which you should have in front of you. Uh, so as you all know, the payroll services is one of the municipal modernization projects, which is currently being undertaken by Middlesex County and its, uh, local municipalities. Um, for brief history, back in twenty nineteen, Middlesex County and local municipalities engaged in an independent company, or, uh, engage in independent company for payroll delivery service review as part of the provincial investment in service delivery and efficiency. Um, and based on those findings, Middlesex County and the municipalities applied for and were approved for, uh, four hundred and eighty seven thousand five hundred dollars in modernization funding to be used towards a payroll services modernization project. Um, so we drafted an RFP, uh, and the intent of that RFP was to enhance or replace existing aging systems with a focus on modernization and collaboration across the county. Uh, the new system would offer significant improvements over existing processes, such as, um, if we combine multiple systems that contain common data and records, such as payroll, HR, time and attendance and scheduling. Uh, it would offer a time savings through the reduction or elimination of manual time-consuming processes, which will allow staff to focus on data validation instead of data entry. Uh, it provides for a consistent user experience through, uh, a common interface instead of multiple, uh, disparate systems. Um, it'd have an enhanced, uh, metrics and reporting engine as far as, you know, trending and reporting for, um, for trend identification. And it would introduce, uh, employee self-service functions. Uh, so additionally, um, a benefit to this would be through a standardized service, we could all support each other. We would, uh, be able to go through the implementation together and kind of, you know, bounce ideas off of each other and then provide support once, uh, the setup is, or the implementation is completed. So based on the results of the RFP evaluation, UKG was ranked as the highest scoring proponent by the evaluation committee. UKG's proposed solution aligns with the Middlesex County Strategic Plan, has it modernized its existing systems and phosphor, fosters the collaborative process between Middlesex County and local municipalities uh, that participated in the RFP. Uh, provincial funding and reserve modernization funds will cover the implementation plus two years of licensing, with future licensing fees being included into the annual budget. Uh, the recommendation before you is for, uh, to approve, UKG is a successful proponent, and the council approved the necessary bylaw. The recommendation before you is for to approve UKG's successful proponent and the council approve the necessary by law. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so we can go into close, right? So I'm gonna say that the next portion of the meeting be closed at three fifty three PM. In order to consider advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege in a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial or labor relations information. Supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which if disclosed could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly. The competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons or organization. Pursuant to subsections two, three, nine, two, F and I of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, so looking for a mover. And that would be Counselor DeVit, seconded by Counselor Rob, anyone against? So move.